Okay, we're good to go. Thank you all for letting us start late today. I wanted to start by thanking Captain Tim McAllister from the California Highway Patrol, and Sheriff Rochelle Whiting, and the Sheriff's Office, and Captain Sturm for putting on the Special Olympics Northern California Law Enforcement Torch Run this morning at Party Dam. It was an excellent way to start the day, and the event raised $1,500 for the event. So, thank you all. And we will start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam County Council, will you lead us?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you read a report out from last meeting's closed session?
Yes. Closed session from June 10th. Item 1, Pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D2. Conference at Legal Counsel, Re-Anticipated Litigation, One Case, Significant Exposure to Litigation, Board Action, No Reportable Action Taken. Item 2, Pursuant to Government Code 5495-6.9D1. Conference at Legal Counsel Regarding Existing Litigation, Services Employees International Union Local 1021 versus County of Calaveras, PRB, E.B., P.E.R.B. Unfair Practice Charge Number SACE1291M. Board Action, No Reportable Action Taken. Item 3, Pursuant to Government Code 5495-7B1. Public Employee Performance Evaluation, Title, County Executive Officer. Board Action, No Reportable Action Taken.
Thank you. We'll move on to staff announcements. We have Chase this morning. Ms. Medina.
Good morning, Chair. Good morning, Honorable Board Members. We have Chase. So Chase is a Husky. I'm gonna let Chase in right here. Come on, Chase. He's too distracted. Chase's eyes are really cool. He has one blue eye and one brown. So Chase is about 45 pounds, and he is approximately a year and a half old. He came to us a little scrawny, but he's starting to fatten up a little bit. He loves having his coat brushed. Oh, he's also neutered. Real important. And he loves playing with all other dogs. We took him around some of our shelter camps, so it'd probably be best if he were to enter a family household with no cats. Just FYI. And our staff noticed that during our shelter play, but he gets along with all other dogs, and he's real playful, real attentive, and real smart. Huskies tend to be real playful, and they need a lot of energy and room to move around, so that's real important as well. So he's real sweet, as you can tell. So is Shawna. And, thank you Shawna. And this is Chase. So I wanted to let you know, our June clinic, rabies clinic and microchip clinic was another success. We had over 128 free rabies vaccines given, and 46 microchips given by Dr. Grace Bloom. We would like to thank Dr. Bloom, our Volunteers Focus, CCAS staff, and all our volunteers. The next event will not be until September. That will be held at Spence Feed and Supply in Angels Camp, and that will be a rabies vaccine clinic only. Really proud to make this next announcement, CCAS for the second year in a row has achieved a no-kill shelter status. So that is huge. So what does that mean? It means that we have saved over 90% of the dogs and cats that have entered our shelter, and this honor is greatly achieved by our dedicated volunteers, by providing behavioral enrichment and promoting adoptable dogs on the social media. Focuses spay and neuter programs, including the Return to Field. This program focuses on managing feral and semi-feral cat populations and PELs. Pets are a loving support, which provide assistance to low-income residents with spain and neutering costs. And this is also continued with focus for helping us with our animals that we receive that need a little bit more advanced care. These are the animals that are usually hit by cars, that are starving, neglected, and they need some very important medical attention. Also, our new foster program, that's helped significantly in our rate of making sure our animals get back to their family and their forever homes. And also the addition of CCA staff, which the board generously granted us for our operational needs and success. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Shawna.
Morning, Eric Holt. Oh, yes. I just wanted to share with the board that you guys voted a while back on the McKay's Good Neighbor Program, and we've been doing the wildfire defense system up in the Arnold area. Originally, it was $2.147 million was allocated in that grant. We were able to reengage with U.S. Forest Service and do a modification, so our first modification, but that'll provide 234 additional acres from Avery to Arnold Plantation in that wildfire defense system of Highway 4. And then we are working on Willie Gap Maintenance Submission for the new round of SNC. So hopeful that we'll have two grants doing fuels reduction in both your guys' districts in the coming year. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Are there any other staff announcements? Hi, Jesse.
I'd just like to remind everybody that we have summer reading program going on at all of our libraries. That includes reading logs with reading goals, where the kids can earn prizes and earn a prize book of their choice when they complete the program. The point of summer reading is to prevent summer slide, so that kids come back to school ready for the next school year. Also, in conjunction with the gracious support from Amador County Board of Education, Amador County School District, we are providing the Lunch at the Library program once again at all eight branches of the library. And so kids can pick up boxed lunches, bagged lunches, at all eight branches of the library. So we hope to see as many of you at the library this summer as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesse. Any other staff announcements? We'll move on now then to public comment.
Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent or regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30-minute allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard.
Thank you. Ms. Powers.
My name is Marcy Powers. I'm an Arnold resident. It is inconceivable to me, unconscionable really, that the Senate is set to vote before the July 4th recess on a bill that would put our treasured U.S. Forest Service lands up for sale. Now, I know that this morning, the parliamentarian disallowed the language that's in the bill, but U.S. Senator Lee is repackaging it, so we need to keep the pressure on. I'd like to share with you two maps, highlighting in green and orange, the thousands of acres just in the Arnold, greater Arnold area, that would be sold under this bill. I'd like to read a letter to you. My friend and my primary healthcare provider, Joni Novacek, couldn't be here today, and I'd like to read a letter that she wrote to you that I'll share with you at the end. Dear Calaveras County Board of Supervisors, I'm writing to express my strong opposition to the proposed sale of public lands, particularly the Arnold Rim Trail in Arnold, as indicated in the Reconciliation Act. I urge you to do everything within your power to prevent the sale of these private lands that serve as a cornerstone of our community and its natural beauty. The Arnold Rim Trail spans 22 miles, is freely accessible to the public, offering residents and visitors alike the opportunity to hike, to bike, ride horses through our scenic landscape. These trails are not only recreational assets, but they are also vital contributors to our local economy through tourism. The influx of visitors drawn to the trail supports small businesses, restaurants, service providers in Arnold, and the surrounding areas, fostering economic growth and community vitality. My personal connection, and this is Joni Novacek, my personal connection to the Arnold Rim Trail underscores its importance. In 2009, my husband and I purchased a cabin in Arnold because of our love for the trail and the outdoor lifestyle it offers. We were so captivated by the area, we decided to move here full-time. I am a nurse practitioner at the Family Medical Center in Arnold, and my husband volunteers with the Arnold Rim Trail Association. Our commitment to this community is rooted in our appreciation for its natural beauty and the opportunities it provides for recreation and connection. The Arnold Rim Trail system is more than just a recreational resource. It's a vital part of our community's identity and sustainability. Sustaining these lands would have a long-lasting detrimental effect on, potentially irreparable, on our community's social fabric, economy, and environment. Removing public access to these lands would diminish the quality of life for residents and reduce appeal for tourists, thereby harming local businesses and the broader economy. So I'd like to leave you with a copy of the letter for the record that Joni is submitting to the Board of Supervisors. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Powers.
Please act to support us in opposing this.
Thank you.
Can we have some sound outside? We have a ground. Okay.
Mr. Van Lachren.
Yes. Hi, welcome. My name is Tom Van Lachren. I'm a resident of Arnold, and I ask that the Board of Supervisors help us fight the sale of our treasured public lands that would be mandated by this current Senate reconciliation bill, of which Mike Lee has submitted the proposition of sale of public lands. It's part of the big, beautiful bill, and his is the big, beautiful blasphemy. That's what I call it. So I'd like you to look at this map, which Pat McGreevy, leader of the all-volunteer Calaveras-Amador Forester Team, who built the Highway 4 defense system to protect us from catastrophic wildfire, created this map for you, and it shows you in the green hashtags all the land that is proposed to be up for sale. It's quite alarming if you look at the amount of shaded area, okay? It includes most of the Highway 4 defense system and all of the Arnold Rim Trail, from Avery to the Sierra Nevada Logging Museum in White Pines. The arbitrary selection and auction of thousands of acres of our public lands without public comment or study is an absolute outrage. I'd like to read a letter to you written by two friends, Kathy and Bob Bebo of Cap Connell, who couldn't be here today. Dear Calaveras County Board of Supervisors, we strongly oppose the item proposed by Senator Mike Lee and included in the Trump budget bill that would allow parts of public land to be sold, and we encourage our representatives to oppose it. Potential land up for grab includes the Arnold Rim Trail, a much-beloved hiking and nature preserve in our county. While Mr. Lee says that the sale of public land would promote housing, the more likely result would be that it would put more wealth in the hands of billionaires while leaving the land open to all sorts of unwanted development. The Trump budget bill already stands to make billionaires wealthier to cost to ordinary Americans, and losing public land, one of the treasures available to people of all income levels in our communities, adds insult to injury. We are concerned that should parts of the Arnold Rim Trail become privately owned, wildfire management in our area would be threatened. Our community works diligently to combat the threat of wildfires in conjunction with Arnold Rim Trail Association and the Calaveras District Office of Stanislaw National Forest. Having land under the control of individuals or corporations that seek profit would probably not live, and who would not live in our community could support our efforts. Finally, Arnold and the surrounding areas rely heavily on tourism focused around our parks and natural beauty. Any destruction would, could potentially impact, have impact on the local economy negatively. As a retired couple living in the Arnold area, we enjoy hiking the Rim Trail. We have witnessed many natural beauties. It is also a source of continuing educational opportunities. I concur completely with Kathy and Bob, and I'd like to submit a copy of this letter to you for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Ann Calderwood, and I share all the concerns that were just expressed about the sale of public lands or the potential sale of public lands. And also, my secondary concern is the proposed cuts to Medicare, Medicaid, and the SNAP program. Because in our county, we are 3,000, the average household income is 3,000 below the poverty line, people, our quality of life is dependent on the forest. I mean, everyone recreates in the forest. I've served on the board up in Lake Mount Pines, and also the Forest Service Multi-Use Stewardship Program, and it is the thing that unites us as a county. All sides of the aisle, people recreate in all different ways, but it holds us together, and the access, if it becomes privatized, will be cut off. It's our watershed. It's our recreation. It's why people move up here. So I also strongly urge the board to take whatever action you can to advise our representatives on a federal level that we don't want our land sold. And another item I wanted to bring your attention to is, part of the bill is that there can be no regulations on what the land is used for, and I know personally that people do not want to live next door to clear cuts and industry. The other thing is that you, as Board of Supervisors, what's written into the bill is you have no control, once this bill is passed, on what happens on that land. Right now, we have influence as the public on what happens in our forest. If that becomes privatized, part of what is written into the bill is you, as supervisors, will have no say over what happens with that land. And once it's gone, we aren't going to be able to get it back. So I support your interest in this issue, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ann. Mr. Lauderbach.
Well, thanks very much for letting me speak. I'm Chair of the Arnold Rim Trail Association and have been for 15 years, and I was going to tell you that the land was going to be sold, but I'm glad to hear that maybe it's not. So maybe I'll just take my 2 minutes and 45 seconds just to tell you a little bit about what we've done for Arnold Rim Trail. And I have to start by emphasizing the passion and support that we've gotten from the district office in Calaveras, so this Stanislaw National Forest. The entirety of the Rim Trail is on national forest land, except a little bit on Millwoods, a small section. Without their passionate support, right from the start, 20 years ago, there would be no Arnold Rim Trail. And that love fest between Arnold Rim Trail Association and the district office continues until today. We've raised over a million dollars in grants, state, federal, and NGO, including Calaveras Community Foundation, to build trail, infrastructure, posts, signage. We've carried in the posts with post hole diggers. There's several hundred posts. We've got 22 miles, the Arnold Rim Trail's 22 miles, and we maintain another 30 miles of trail. And then, we have all kinds of activities. We guide a sunset hike to a prominent place, Cougar Rock, once a month, and then watch the sunset, come back with headlamps, and from there, we can see way north into the county. We can see Sheep Ranch. We can see the Mendocino Coast Range. We can see Mount Diablo. And then if we look south, we can see the mountains in Yosemite National Park. We have a couple of retired park rangers who lead guided hikes, gentle two-mile hikes. They're superb teachers. We have trail workdays, the third Saturday. This month, we had 20 citizens join the fun with lobsters and rooks and clouds and that kind of stuff. We have a professional website, designed by Laura Bowley. She did it pro bono. It's a gorgeous website. We have a map, which was done pro bono by a professional cartographer. We bought a $2,700 super accurate GPS locator that the pros use. We walked 60 miles of trail in the Arnold Rim Trail area to get the super accurate tracks for her to create a map. That map is available for free. We don't want any barrier to public safety. And at every, on the website and at every trailhead, there's a QR code to download the map, so people will always know where they are.
Thank you, Steve.
It's really wonderful.
Thank you very much, Steve. Ms. Bauman.
These forests belong to the American people. President Teddy Roosevelt led the fight to conserve our natural resources. He put this land aside 125 years ago to preserve them and for future generations to enjoy. He called for people to see to it that they are preserved for their children and their children's children forever. With the majestic beauty all unmarred, it is not that what we have that will make us a great nation, it is the way in which we use it, he said. It's where we see it sit in solace, walk with joy, hike in awe, bike for excitement, fish and hunt for sustenance, and connect with nature. Canoe along its rivers, snowshoe through its silent woods, and where our wildlife is protected and their habitats preserved. Now, U.S. senators are poised to destroy the living legacy of public lands and wildlife Roosevelt left with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Ms. Ruben.
Hi, good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Martha Rubin, and I live in Arnold. Today, I wanted to talk to you and ask you to strongly oppose the item of selling off our public lands. I feel it's reckless behavior of our senators to sell off our public lands just for the profit of others, and I say that it strongly increases the probability of fire danger, and perhaps the catastrophic fire that we're all working so hard against. So I ask for your help in this, for this situation. Now we have some time to regroup. We got a little bit of a reprieve. So I'm hoping that the effect of selling off our lands, especially the Arnold Rim Trail, it affects our local economy, our county counts on tourism and people coming to fishing, game, hiking, boating, and of course, to work on the Arnold Rim Trail. So please, I ask you to use your influence to reach our state and federal representatives. The community is behind this and will be behind you, and we want to make sure that not one acre is sold. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Martha. Mr. Butner.
My name is Christopher Butner, publisher of calaveras2026election.com. On May 28th, I met with California State Treasurer Fiona Ma, at which time we explicitly discussed the substantial evidence I've compiled of malfeasance and corruption by Calaveras County officials, and the shocking fact that all five district supervisors are presently under FPPC investigation or under Enforcement Division warning letters for campaign finance violations of the Political Reform Act. The actionable outcome of that recent discussion three weeks ago with State Treasurer Fiona Ma, following her expression of dismay concerning revelations of the FPPC investigations of all district supervisors' financial misconduct, was her very specific guidance for me to directly escalate my evidence-backed allegations of Calaveras County government malfeasance to the California Attorney General's Office and to the California State Comptroller's Office. Escalation to the California Attorney General's Office and to the California State Comptroller's Office following State Treasurer Fiona Ma's guidance is now underway. There is little, if any, precedence in the state of California for the entirety of a county's Board of Supervisors to simultaneously be under investigation or warning by the FPPC's Enforcement Division. Calaveras County may stand alone in this ignominious distinction, a fact in process of being confirmed for me by the FPPC. Related to the persistent corruption of the Calaveras County government and of the county's immediate concern, is its government crime policy with American International Group, AIG, is in jeopardy of cancellation or nonrenewal due to my evidence-backed allegations of persistent collusion between the Calaveras County government and the Calaveras Visitors Bureau to intentionally deceive the taxpayers of Calaveras County by continuing to facilitate and fund a nonprofit corporation, the Calaveras Visitors Bureau, that persistently lies as to its legal type while under contract for funding with Calaveras County transient occupancy taxes. Be assured, I've already had initial conversations with AIG representatives concerning the misconduct of their policyholder, the Calaveras County government. You certainly cannot reasonably defend your persistent misconduct or your deception of the Calaveras Visitors Bureau nonprofit corporation type to AIG. Lastly, due to the dismissiveness, insolence, and collusion of the Calaveras County government and the Calaveras Visitors Bureau in refusing to address what is clearly an intentional and persistent misrepresentation of its nonprofit's legal type for Martin Hubbard's personal financial gain, I'm seeking investigation and revocation of the Calaveras Visitors Bureau's 501(c)(6) tax exempt status by the IRS for cause. My name's Christopher Butner, publisher of calaveras2026election.com. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chair, maybe just one moment. Sorry, just one moment. I just wanted to announce, we do have additional seating in the overflow room where you can monitor the meeting, just if you need additional seating. Thank you. Okay, Ms., sorry. Go ahead.
That's okay. Good morning, everyone. I come before you with no issue or concern. I simply wanted to introduce myself. My name is Aisha Williamson, and I am the new Executive Director of Sierra Hope, located in Angels Camp. I'm replacing someone who was in place for 30 years. So along with a little bit of change at the top, also comes a little bit of change all the way through. I wanted to come before you and sort of extend an olive branch and let you know that as many times in over the years as the organization has adapted and adopted and pivoted to meet the needs of the community, we're doing it once again. And I'm partnering very closely with Health and Human Services at the county level, Behavioral Health, Resource Connection at the Crisis Center, because we genuinely feel that we're pillars in the community to help affect some change. We're all aware of the recent outcomes in the report from the grand jury's civil investigation about housing and the availability of inventory and emergency shelter and so on, and we want to come together, and I want to be that partner to work with the governmental agencies and see what we can do to affect some change and increase those available options. So I just wanted to give you a face to put with an organization and let you know that we're here and we're trying, and we're very much a part of the Housing Resource Partnership. I'm one of the new co-chairs, and we definitely want to work with all of you and look forward to presenting at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Fathoms mom.
And thank you to her as well. This is my second Board of Supervisors meeting today. I had Amador County earlier today, and one thing I love about Amador County is, I go to the departments and I have to check on certain things, and they give me candy. And that's, you know, you guys just don't do that here for some reason. Maybe you're concerned about my health, but I am cancer-free and never had cancer, so I am doing well. That just came down on Saturday for you people that don't know that. I think it's time for some performance evaluations. And I'm not talking about staff here, I'm talking about the Board of Supervisors individually. And I think we'll start with the best, Martin Hubbard. Now, Martin, you know, he came here unskilled in politics and, you know, head of the Visitors Bureau, head of the Chamber of Commerce, and he brought a lot of forward movement in both those organizations, and he's done a, he's done a, he did a fantastic job there, and he's doing a fantastic job here. And one of the things you'll notice about Mr. Hubbard is he doesn't ask stupid questions. If he truly doesn't know something, he'll ask the question, and hopefully, or not hopefully, or maybe somebody else had the same question, and they'll, and they'll be informed as well. That old saying, you know, you know, there are these sayings in politics, never ask a question unless you don't know the answer. I think that that was just a joke they're playing on you people. None of you are real politicians. None of you are going to get any place. That's just the way it is. And I, I'm just being truthful. I'm just being truthful. This is a small county with little resources, and people live here, and their concerns are making their community better, making it livable for their, for their, for themselves and their neighbors, their safety, number one concern, roads, bridges, number one and two concern. Martin Hubbard has been, been looking after his constituents really well. You know, even though it's, you take a turn as, as head of the board... You know, even though it's, you take a turn as head of the board, Martin Hubbard, I think exemplifies what a leader is, and we should, and you should be looking to him, not to some others who might be looking to us. I'm only going to do one today, you know, one supervisor, and who knows if I ever show up again. It's always the thing, you know, one time I didn't show up for six years, seven years, five years, and that happens, I get called away. So with that, Mr. Hubbard, fine job you're doing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Lori Downing. I've been a resident of Mountain Ranch for just over 30 years. My husband Steve and I have been the volunteer park manager for Mountain Ranch Community Park for nearing seven years. In 1979, the Mountain Ranch Community Club, otherwise known as the MRCC, received a $30,000 grant to begin construction of the beautiful Mountain Ranch Park. With a plan, a purpose, and a lot of volunteers, the club proceeded to build the park. The members of the MRCC, along with a few other volunteers, put in the ball field, irrigation system, basketball court, restrooms, snack shack, picnic tables, and improved the playground. The MRCC continued to maintain and improve the park over the following-
Lori, Lori, I hate to interrupt you, but that actually is an agenda item.
Oh.
So would you mind holding off until we bring that up?
I guess I was a little overzealous.
Well done. It's item number 33.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning, and good morning to our participants. I bring good news today. First of all, we have a cabal of volunteers that have been working really hard to serve Calaveras County in several areas. One of them is our GoToDoc program, which has tried to fill the gaps for transportation for our senior citizens and disabled. As you know, we had another organization drop out, and we're trying to cover down on them. I want, I'm hoping that everyone will share the word that we have transportation, no charge, to people needing to get to the doctor. So that's the first thing. Second thing, we have another program called Wellness Online, thanks to some of our partners to include County Health. We're working with folks in Calaveras County that need help to pay their medical bills. We can help them a little bit, but also help with copays. Big challenge, again, because of our demographic. Third thing, we have a new program called Coming Home, and we're working closely with the Sheriff's Department and Public Defender's Office to help with our inmates who are transitioning out of the county jail. We just started this program, thanks to our volunteers, and there's no funding for that one, but we've got plenty of volunteers that we're working with right now. And also a shout-out too for the volunteers that are working for the Valley Springs Veterans Park, we're working to refurbish that. And it's thanks to our awesome supporters, collaborators, and partners, such as the Calaveras Community Foundation, our Valley Springs Rotary, VFW 26W0, dip double zero, go Army, and other partners who are working to help make Calaveras a better place. And all we're asking for everyone is to spread the word. We're still growing, we're still working, and we're hoping to get our new grants for the New Year, so thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Nitia Premah. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist, and I've had a practice in Calaveras County for 25 years, and I'd like to hear for that one. And I am very concerned about the forest and the wilderness areas that are, is being sold off. The primary reason that people come to therapy is because of high stress levels. And I have worked with the military internationally, and especially in Japan, they've come to respect their wilderness, and they've found that, you may have heard the term Shinran Yoku, which means forest healing. And people need that kind of way to relate to the wilderness. We've lost our way in terms of really being able to be still and appreciate what's around us. So I just want to say, I really urge you to look into this, because it's a dangerous time for us to sell off our lands in California. We have some of the most pristine wilderness, and people benefit from it, and we can also benefit the forest, because the more interest we have in the forest, then the more we will take care of it. And children especially, there's been lots of studies about how children have lost connection with the earth. They don't know how to relate, they'd rather sit in front of a screen. And the whole practice of Shinran Yoku is clinically backed, so they've done studies that show the effects of the forest, the trees, on people. And I've become a California naturalist certified, and I'm also a certified international forest bathing guide. So this affects my work with people, so, and it will, you will see more and more and more. It's a fast-growing field, because especially California therapists are so needed, and people come because of the high stress. And by the way, PTSD not only is stress-related, but it's a loss of identity, and that's because we don't identify with the nature around us. That's my point.
Thank you, Nitia.
Hi, Debbie Beaufort for-
Debbie, is this public comment or are you going to talk about the animal shelter?
We just, well, I want you to vote for the animal shelter.
Because it is on our agenda. Okay, go for it.
We had a little friend back here, but he had to go out and do his business. He was coming because he wanted to see Sarah. Anyway, there's a whole bunch of us here today, and, yeah, go ahead, clap for yourselves. We really need this shelter, you guys, it's gotten worse and worse and worse. The poor staffs, I mean, they're dragging, they've been full, and I'm not joking, that place has been full of dogs since 21, 2021. We only have 21 kennels, don't forget, official kennels. They've just added four, but it's unsanitary, it's icky, icky, icky. So we're, please, please, please.
Yeah, Debbie will bring this up on the agenda item.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And we're actually at a half an hour now, which is the first time since I've sat on the board that we've actually been at a half an hour of public comment. So if you have any further public comment, we'll bring it back at the end of the meeting. Now we'll move on to the consent agenda.
Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the Board at one time without discussion. Any Board member, staff member, or interested party may request the removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion.
Could I ask the Board, are there any items that you'd like to address?
I would like to pull item four and five.
Four and five?
Nine through 15.
Nine through 15.
Nine through 15.
Anyone else? No. Would any member of the public like to pull an item?
Twelve and 15, Mike, thank you.
Twelve 15.
Twelve and 15.
Yes.
I'm pulling item 24 for key resources.
I would do it right this time. I would respectfully like to request item 33 be pulled from the agenda.
That's on the regular agenda, so still, hang on.
I'll get it right eventually.
Thank you, Lori.
Just practicing.
Yeah.
I have a number 25, please.
Number 25.
Eighteen.
Eighteen, bingo.
Anyone else?
I was going to say. Okay, for the remainder of the consent agenda, do I have a motion?
So, so move it.
So move, Mr. Trump. A second, all in favor? Aye. Okay, we will start with item number four.
Okay.
Madam CEO.
I'm sorry, can I read the item, please?
I'm sorry, of course.
Yes, thank you. Item four, action item, Administrative Office authorized the Facilities Department to conduct routine preventative maintenance at the Railroad Flat Community Center not to exceed $1,600 annually to cover staff time and minor vendor costs necessary for safety and operation of keys.
Ms. Andriola.
Good morning, Chair and members of the Board. Jamie Andriola, Principal Admin Analyst with the Administration Office. This item requests authorization for the Facilities Department to perform routine preventative maintenance at the Railroad Flat Community Center not to exceed $1,600 annually. Normally, routine maintenance like this would be handled internally as it is standard part of ongoing facilities operations and is already built into their existing budget. However, based on prior board discussion, we're bringing this item forward today for formal approval. To be clear, this proposal is for basic maintenance only, it's not tied to any new programming, and it won't change how the facility is used. This is simply about keeping the building safe, operational, and stable. The Railroad Flat Community Center was acquired by the county following its previous ownership by the school district. At the time of acquisition, the facility had already experienced significant deferred maintenance. The proposed maintenance schedule is intended to prevent further deterioration and avoid larger, more costly repairs down the road. The preventative maintenance is consistent with what we do at other county facilities and includes the following services: annual backflow testing and kitchen fire system inspection and service, both of which are required for safety and compliance; seasonal roof maintenance and inspection for the gym, admin, and restroom buildings; twice-a-year HVAC servicing for both the gym and admin buildings; and an annual water heater inspection. The total cost, including county staff time and minor vendor services, is approximately $1,600 per year. No new funding is being requested, this will be absorbed within the existing Facilities Department budget. Approving this preventative maintenance is in the county's best interest because it allows us to take a proactive, cost-effective approach to preserving a public asset that has already experienced years of deferred maintenance. While we know that the facility may still require larger repairs in the future, particularly due to its age and condition, staying on top of routine inspections and basic upkeep is the best way to extend the life of existing systems and minimize the risk of sudden failures or costly emergencies. If routine maintenance is deferred, even temporarily, the conditions of the building could worsen more quickly, leading to greater costs, potentially liability, and community frustration. This investment won't prevent every issue, but it helps us manage the facility responsibly and avoid unnecessary surprises down the line. With that, staff recommends the approval of the full maintenance scope as proposed, and I'm happy to answer or provide any more details as needed, and I also have Kevin here to answer any questions.
Supervisor Toffenelli.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, and first I want to thank the CEO for bringing this to the Board as directed. Thank you very much for doing that. Just a couple of questions, I had some questions answered, but did we just not replace this roof? Was the roof just, just done just a month or two ago, it was just completed?
Yes.
So why are we bi-annually inspecting the roof when we just purchased the building for 10 million that we didn't inspect the roof on before we bought it? So I don't know why we're bi-annually on a brand-new roof, maybe annually I could see, but we've got three times here for three different items for bi-annually inspecting the roof.
My understanding, Kevin can talk to this a little bit more, but his team inspects all of the roofs on campus, or seasonally, so I'm guessing before winter and probably before summer, so after winter, I'm not sure what parts of the year you do it, but it's to seasonally make sure that everything is secure.
Yeah, all of our facilities are done on a seasonal basis before we go into the winter months and then after the winter months. So it is twice a year, that includes entire Government Center and any of our buildings or locations that we own. And it is a new roof and-
And so is the ones here.
What's that?
And so are the ones here.
Exactly. So in order to maintain the warranty requirements and then make sure that we're getting the full amount of a 20, 30-year roof program, then you have to do those regular seasonal maintenance.
And so what you're saying, this is not any different than any other government building that we have, you do the same thing bi-annually that you have listed here?
Yes.
On all the buildings?
Yep. We built into our new maintenance program, you know, at different intervals, I guess you could say, depending upon the location or what it is, but pretty standard, even our government building that we're sitting underneath now has a twice-a-year inspection cleaning. That cleans gutters, we check sealants, we check penetration details, we blow leads off, and we check for any changes that might have occurred since the last storm or the last season, you know, so pretty standard stuff.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that this is not anything different than what's happening on all the other buildings.
No, not at all.
Okay, thank you, Kevin.
No problem.
Are there any public comments?
Sir.
I'm sorry.
I have one thing. Yeah, so thank you for that, Kevin. Last time you didn't comment when we were talking about the Health and Human Services building, but you do do that on a regular, it's part of our regular routine when you, you have been over that roof, right?
Yeah, since we purchased that, we have basically inputted that building, that new location or asset into our computerized maintenance software, and so yes, now moving forward, we are doing the semi-annual. Before, we were not, because we didn't own that, so, you know, some of those things fell on the responsibility of the actual building owner, but now that it's us, that we are doing that. And we did do a roof maintenance, or a roof inspection on that building as well.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, thank you. So, to the point, we all discussed Railroad Flat Elementary, and Mr. Toffenelli basically made a statement, and none of the Board disagreed with him about any dollar spent up there, bringing it forward to the Board. For the most part, I agree with that, but when we get to a certain point where we're having to move forward, the regular maintenance that's going through everything and everything else, I think we're, as a Board, getting into the weeds a little bit and creating more work for staff to bring these things forward. So to a small degree, if Mr. Toffenelli is willing to hear me and agree with me, maybe I would like to pull the Board on maybe being more lenient when it comes to routine maintenance and everything and bringing it forward to the Board on every matter that's spent there at Railroad Flat Elementary. I'd like to hear your opinion on that, Gary.
Can you restate what you're saying?
So, right now, this is before us.
Yes.
Because we, as a Board, sat here and you-
We asked to bring it-
Every dollar.
Correct.
And for the most part, when it comes to new things being changed and everything, like let's say a major thing, under $50,000 that the CEO could sign off on, I agree, but when it comes to routine maintenance, I kind of feel that we're kind of getting into the weeds.
I understand what you're saying.
Okay, yeah.
That's fine, this is, this before us says annually, so if we vote for it and agree for it, it's going to be annual anyway.
Right.
They're not going to be bringing it back every year.
Right.
So, yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I just want to give staff a little more time to work on some other stuff, so.
Thank you, sir.
If the rest of the Board agrees on that. Other than that, I don't know, Autumn may not.
I agree. Getting past the major, bringing Railroad Flat Community Center up to where it is now, I think at this point I would like to make a motion to move forward with preventative maintenance as we do all county facilities.
Supervisor, can I hang on just a second? Any other public comment regarding this item?
No.
Okay, motion stands.
Motion.
I will second.
Thank you, all in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Captain. Madam Clerk, can we move on to now to item number five?
Yes. Item five, resolution, Administrative Office approved the fiscal year 2025/26 recommended budget excluding the transient occupancy tax distribution, special revenue, funds, and special districts.
Great, Madam CEO.
So this is just our regular budget item that approves the spending plan until we adopt the final budget in September, and it does exclude the transient occupancy tax, which is included in those other items that were pulled, I believe it's nine through 15.
It's 10 through 15, yeah.
10 through 15, so.
Okay, and Supervisor-
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure, and I wanted to make sure that this is a temporary budget, it's just to get us through from July 1st to September, when we find out when our books are closed, where we stand, what's going on, and then what the state is going to do to us if they do anything to us. So there could be change- So there could be changes coming in September. We did pull some items, and we agreed to some of them, that this is temporary. We don't know if it's going to be permanent until we get to and agree to it in September because there could be further cuts because we don't know what the state, again, is going to do. So I just want to make sure everybody understands that.
So that is correct, Supervisor Toffenelli. This will give us spending authority through September until we adopt the final budget, and at that time, we should know more detailed information on the state and federal government's spending as well as our own revenue sources because we haven't closed out the year yet for property taxes, for sales taxes, for all of those things. So I'm looking at what those year-end totals are and how that affects the permanent budget that will be adopting in September.
Okay. Thank you. Is there any other board comment? Is there any public comment regarding this item? Any comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move aside. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nay.
You were nay.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I didn't--
I'm staying consistent with my vote from the last board meeting.
Okay, we'll move on now to item number nine. Madam Clerk.
Item nine, Resolution, Administrative Office, adopt a resolution approving fiscal year 2025/26 recommended budget for designated in special revenue funds excluding transient occupancy tax.
Madam CEO.
So this is similar to that last item. This gives us spending authority through September until we adopt the final budget, and it does not include the transient occupancy taxes in item number nine as well. Or not, yes.
And I did pull this one through fifteen because I wanted to lump it all in a couple questions and comments. Instead of doing each one, I felt it would be better to just do nine through fifteen together.
So what I'd like to do then is I'd like to hand the gavel over to Supervisor Stopper if you would handle-- Stup-- Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. If you would take nine through fifteen, that would be awesome. Thank you very much.
Got me.
Yeah, we'll let you know when it come in.
Yeah, please do.
I'm assuming the rest of the board agrees on condensing nine through fifteen as a whole, so with that-- Madam Clerk.
Read each of those at once.
I would suppose so. Would that be correct, County Council?
Yes, okay.
Sorry, Stacy.
No, that's okay. We read nine. So item ten, Resolution, Administrative Office, adopt a resolution approving fiscal year 2025/26 recommended budget for the distribution of transient occupancy taxes to the sheriff's office in the amount of six hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Item eleven, Resolution, Administrative Office, adopt a resolution approving fiscal year 2025/26 recommended budget for the distribution of transient occupancy taxes to the fire districts in the amount of six hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred dollars. Item twelve, Resolution, Administrative Office, adopt a resolution approving fiscal year 2025/26 recommended budget for the distribution of transient occupancy taxes to the Calaveras Visitors Bureau in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Item thirteen, Resolution, Administrative Office, adopt a resolution approving fiscal year 2025/26 recommended budget for the distribution of transient occupancy taxes to the roads department in the amount of six hundred and twenty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty-four dollars. Item fourteen, Resolution, Administrative Office, adopt a resolution approving fiscal year 2025/26 recommended budget for the distribution of transient occupancy taxes to the general fund in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. Item fifteen, Resolution, Administrative Office, adopt a resolution approving fiscal year 2025/26 recommended budget for the distribution of transient occupancy taxes to the Chamber of Commerce in the amount of fifty thousand dollars.
Okay. So I just wanted to clarify. Item number nine deals with our special revenue funds, and that's giving us special-- that's giving us authority for spending out of those funds until September. Ten through fifteen, of course, deal with transient occupancy tax and the allocation of the transient occupancy tax to the different various agencies that we've committed that funding to. And again, that's spending authority through September. In September, the board could choose to do a different allocation if necessary, based on budget.
So Ms. Follendorf, you pulled nine through fifteen, as well as number, I believe it was fifteen, pulled by a member of the public. So, please.
Do you want to do public first for item five, or do you want me to go ahead?
I would have you go ahead first, and we'll bring it back to the public after you.
Okay. One of the things that I am talking to staff, I guess we did not give formal direction to staff at the last meeting, and I wanted to ask the board so it was clear, is there, given the fact that multiple organizations, especially the sheriff's department, has done the reduction that was asked from the admin office, we still have organizations that have not done that, specifically looking at item number eleven, is there a direction to staff to work with the JPA to do this, be equitable as we have asked all the rest of our county departments to do reductions going forward? So we discussed it, but there was no formal direction to staff, so I just want to make that clear so staff knows how to proceed on that. And then also, just from my last vote a couple of weeks ago, standing to the same thing, I think we're doing staff a disservice of not considering some of the options and having them planned as if we do have these things till September. I think we need to make some of these hard decisions now so we can move forward, but getting-- But I also understand that the final budget isn't until September, but I still think we're giving staff a disservice by not doing some of these decisions now. So that's all I have.
Would that be included with the original budget that we just approved?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But anyways, I just wanted to see if we needed to give more clarity on staff direction, especially given that the sheriff's office has done their cut, and it severely impacted deputies and public safety in that arena.
So at this time, Mr. Butler, you pulled number fifteen also?
Twelve and fifteen.
Oh, twelve and fifteen, so. If you would--
Fifteen.
Well, twelve and fifteen. We're including this as the entire package right now, so we're gonna vote on it as one.
I'm rolling with fifteen.
Okay.
My name's Christopher Butler, publisher of Calaveras 2026 election dot com. On June thirtieth, 2023, I published to my website a forensic audit of eighteen consecutive years of Calaveras Chamber of Commerce IRS filings titled "Calaveras County Chamber of Commerce Revenue Expense Analysis Revealing a Near-Two-Decade Legacy of Endemic Fiscal Negligence." I also investigated the document, documented the chamber's fifty thousand dollar annual transient occupancy tax allocation, publishing the findings titled "Calaveras Supervisors Strained to Justify Chamber TOT Funding" to my website on September twenty-fourth, 2024. The Board of Supervisors asks us to believe two years of fifty thousand dollar chamber allocations is to promote tourism to the west end of the county. My published reports document a hundred thousand dollars in total TOT funding allocated to the chamber as being used to prop up a fiscally mismanaged business bureau. The chamber's 2024 IRS tax return reports total annual revenue of approximately one hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, with thirty-seven thousand dollars of that revenue received as TOT funding, and total expenses of a hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars, with one hundred and one thousand dollars allocated to salaries and other compensation. The chamber generated more revenue as a landlord by subletting twenty-three thousand five hundred and eight dollars in office space compared to revenue generation from annual dues and subscriptions, which totaled a mere fifty-nine hundred dollars. In 2024, the chamber allocated a mere seventeen hundred and thirty-eight dollars to advertising and promotion while earning a paltry one hundred and ninety dollars in annual advertising revenue, revealing endemic marketing impotence. The 2024 IRS filing lacks a line item detailing where the TOT revenue was allocated for the promotion of tourism in the west end of Calaveras County. As a partially publicly funded entity, the chamber is also derelict in failing to publish on its website its monthly meeting schedule, agenda items, meeting minutes, mission statement, applicable bylaws, annual expense and financial budgets and reports, strategic business development and marketing plans, and any accurate reporting of the allocation of annual TOT funding for its explicitly intended purpose of west end tourism promotion. The chamber has therefore forfeited its privilege of receiving funding in the 2025/26 fiscal year budget by its lack of transparency and misallocation of two years of TOT funding. Continued TOT funding of the chamber exacerbates the existing complaint being filed with the State Controller's Office regarding the fraudulent misrepresentation of the CVB's nonprofit corporation type. Thank you. Do you want me to do twelve?
Counsel, we put this all together as one item?
I know the board is discussing them as one item, but I think that if folks have public comment on particular ones--
Butler, please. Mr. Butler, please.
Okay, great. My name's Christopher Butler, publisher of Calaveras 2026 election dot com. Calaveras Visitors Bureau is not a public benefit nonprofit corporation. There is no ambiguity in that statement. The Calaveras Visitors Bureau is not a public benefit nonprofit corporation. That is a factual statement. The Calaveras Visitors Bureau is not a public benefit nonprofit corporation. Having now heard that unambiguous factual statement three times in the last thirty seconds, is there any part of that declarative statement that any of you are incapable of comprehending? Ms. Edwards? Ms. Hitchcock? Ms. Follendorf? Ms. Sandell? Mr. Toffenelli? Mr. Stopper? Mr. Hubbard? The Calaveras Visitors Bureau has been a mutual benefit nonprofit corporation since July twelfth, 2021. Is there any part of that declarative statement that any of you are incapable of comprehending? Ms. Edwards? Ms. Hitchcock? Ms. Follendorf? Ms. Sandell? Mr. Toffenelli? Mr. Stopper? Mr. Hubbard? The CVB is a mutual benefit nonprofit corporation subject to different laws and regulations. I've previously articulated the numerous differences, so for the Calaveras County and the CVB to contractually represent otherwise, having been credibly advised and cautioned by me for two years, invites legal and financial consequences for each of you and your government careers. All of you have been cautioned of this repeatedly, some of you for two years. Yet this government and the CVB, led by Executive Director Martin Hubbard and Board of Directors President Susan Weatherby, smugly persist in advancing Martin Hubbard's false CV narrative for financial gain. I'm disgusted by your collective arrogance. You intentionally deceive the public you are supposed to be ethically serving. The tourism promotion agreement between Calaveras County and the CVB dated July first, 2023, and signed on August twenty-second, 2023 falsely claims the CVB to be a public benefit nonprofit corporation. Apparently, this government believes it is above the law. You are not above the law, and you will be held legally accountable for your collusion and corruption. You've dismissed my legitimate concerns of your fiscal misconduct and cast me as a villain. You've abused the power of your office and your authority. Vote today to approve three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the CVB for fiscal year 25/26, and that misguided action will be countered by me seeking revocation of the CVB's tax-exempt IRS status, cancellation of the Calaveras County Government Crime Policy, escalation with the FPPC of claims of conflict of interests, criminal complaints with the District Attorney, and the Office of the Attorney General, and presentation of clause for an audit conducted by the California State Controller's Office. I am Christopher Butler, publisher of Calaveras 2026 election dot com. Thank you.
Thank you. That'll bring it back to the board-- Or board for one second, Dana. I'll bring it public comment. So is there any comments beyond the people that pulled the budget item at this time by the board before I go to public comment? No? Not at this time? Okay, Dana, sorry. My apologies.
No problem. Number eleven, I'm Dana Nichols, Chairman of the San Andreas Fire Protection District Board, and I'm also on the Board of the Joint Powers Authority for the Fire Services. And it's a couple of years-- We've been sharing twenty-five percent of the TOT for some years, and then a couple of years ago, there was a time when the county stopped paying after reaching the estimated amount of what the TOT would be. Now, TOT goes up and down, so it's very unlikely that the amount budgeted is going to be the exact amount. It could be less, it could be more, and we understand when it's less, we're going to get less because twenty-five percent of less is less. But when it's more, we want to get the twenty-five percent of the more, and I was worried that the wording of this implied that the sheriff's office and the fire districts and everybody that was going to get capped at a certain amount, and then everything was going to get swept somewhere else, probably the general fund after that. So I kind of just wanted to make sure that it's a twenty-five percent cut, not a six hundred and sixty-two thousand five hundred. The sixty-six-two five hundred is only the estimate that we're working with right now, not the actual amount. That's all. Just wanted to make sure. So I'm right, it's a twenty-five percent cut.
We-- Just years ago, and she can say where we're at now, but we've given direction as a board that the actuals would be the amount, and generally, we don't know that till late into the next-- Or not real late, but, you know, September, October area, the end of August, maybe, what the actuals are. At that time, we would be-- So it kind of is, you know, after the fact of the current budget year what we find out. So maybe the wording in there is a little bit foggy, but I'll let her say what they are at now, but she wasn't here necessarily when we gave that direction, so I just want to make sure the administrative office does know that.
So previously, the board has given us direction to true-up during different budget cycles. Of course, the board always has the option to make a different decision, but that has been board direction for prior budget cycles.
But right now, we have the question on the floor as to how we're going to proceed with that from Supervisor Follendorf. Am I correct, Ms. Follendorf?
Yes.
All right. So that's the question on the floor with these being pulled, and so that's where we're at right now. So, Mr., is there any other board comments? Public comment other than--
Yeah. So my name's Don Young. I'm the Fire Chief of the San Andreas Fire Protection District. What troubles me the most is when you folks call, or any of the folks here, fires responsible to be there regardless. It wasn't too long ago that Amanda's city was under fire. If it hadn't been for the local government, CAL FIRE, and the folks that were there, probably a better part of the Angel City would have been destroyed. We don't ask a question. When we respond, when the tones go out, we go. Don't matter if it's COVID. It doesn't matter what situation arises. We do this. They talk about the cuts that were done for the other department heads, and I believe for them, too. I feel bad for them. But most of those people are all receiving benefits and retirement. My people are not receiving that. They don't get dental, they don't get medical, vision, or anything else. What we are able to pay them, based on the measure that we pass, plus the monies that come in that you folks allocate to us, is what keeps these young people on our departments so that we're able to keep and hold them for longer so that Autumn's family doesn't hire them with CAL FIRE. And I mean that with a lot of love, and you know that. We want to keep these young people within our fire districts, not send them off somewhere else, and we can't do that if we don't have adequate funds to do it. So I would appreciate anything that you folks can do. It is appreciated, and I encourage you to come by the fire departments, talk to us. Come see what we're doing. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Young.
Any further public comment? With that, bring it back to the board. Any other comments by the board or--
Any other comments by the Board, or...
I stand by my June 10 of funding it as listed here.
I'll move these items.
As is? Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
Passes now at 3:10. Vote of the Board.
And I just want to remind the Board that, you know, we also have to fight for our own employees. We're asking them to do some drastic cuts. We've got layoffs on the table, and we do not know what the future is in two years. If we do not start making some of these decisions and hard conversations that need to be had now, for the decisions that need to be made in two to three years, we are doing a disservice not to just ourselves, but also the public. If we do not start having creativity in how we can make and fill some of these services that the public rely on. And that's not just, you know, that is the fire. How can we get creative to make sure those services don't get lost in two to three years? How do we keep the funding of the deputies? And so I just want to make sure that they, sport knows, like, it is going to get harder. It is going to get way harder, and it is not going to be fun for us up here at all. The room will probably be all the way outside.
If I may make a comment as to my vote also, because in so many aspects, I am 100% agree with you, how we move forward, other than I'm hopeful that things are better by September so that we can continue with this. But this does not say that we may change our vote in September, because we do have to make those hard choices. And, Mr. Young, I hear you, and my heart's always been with the fire departments. I've always been right there and solid for you all, but at the same time, I need to be solid for my Sheriff's Department. And our Sheriff's Department has made concessions for years in a row, and they are one of our departments. Unfortunately, the state made a decision, and the counties followed years ago. We, as Calaveras County, continue to support you, but you're not one of our departments, unfortunately. My heart's with you, but that's not the way the law works. I will continue to support you as much as possible in the future, but when those decisions between our people here and your people, we have to keep everyone sustainable to the same level. So that may change and vary based on the facts in the future, sir. So I want to let you all know that, you know, because I've been 100% transparent with you in the past, and if my, I'll give you forewarning before, if I change my mind in the future, you will know where I'm at before I stand here.
You want to say anything, Dana?
Yeah, I'll say something for all of them. Again, as I said earlier, this is a temporary budget until we get to September. All of this may change. We may need more than half at the general fund of the TOT taxes, just to maintain what we have, or even, not even to even get to where we are. We don't know what's going to happen in the future, and I think everybody needs to understand that. This is, yes, we're going forward, we're going forward right now until we find out what the state is going to do. So everybody needs to be prepared for that, and not say we did this or that or whatever, because these funding, these funds are general fund dollars, and we are giving them out to the departments for safety, and road maintenance, and fire. But again, this is a temporary budget to get us through to September when we find out, again, what the state and federal government are going to do, and that could affect every single one of us. So that's my comments.
Ms. Sandell, do you have anything to say? Okay. With that, Mr. Hubbard?
I can do it.
You're back in the hot seat.
18.
I was going to ask County Council. Could I ask County Council? Because technically, I can vote on nine, and I was out of the room for that. Is it too late to put my vote as a yes for nine?
I think, I mean, the Board already voted, and it passed.
So just let it go. Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
No worries. We'll go with item 18.
Item 18, action item code compliance. One, authorize county nuisance abatement on property owned by Paula A. Meyer, trustee, in case number CE230194, related to the property located at 3729 Oleo Acre Road, Mountain Ranch, APN 020027205. Two, authorize code compliance to obey all existing code violations on the property and specially assess the abatement cost against the property. And three, authorize recognition of notice of abatement lien against the property to recover administrative costs and cost of abatement if not paid by the owner within the timeline prescribed.
Thank you. Doc?
Morning, Chair members of the Board. Doug Oliver, chief building official. I'm going to apologize if it looks like I'm reading off of my phone. I was trying to save a little paper and use our agenda. I realized I should probably bring an iPad, and they'll be able to see what I'm looking at here. Well, rating your Board is an item to authorize nuisance abatement on the subject property, and to be able to collect the abatement costs through lien assessment on the parcel. This project was investigated September of '23. Initially, where the investigative officer received an anonymous complaint, investigated the site, and found that there was junk debris and junk cars on the property. They did send a notice violation warning, the parcel owner of the violation, and gave them a time to remediate. We received additional complaints and responded with another investigation, found that the situation has not been corrected and was getting worse, so we sent a citation. The citation was not appealed, and at this time, they've essentially waived their right to appeal on that. We have multiple complaints that were received after that citation was sent. And so what we're looking for now is essentially the authorization to put it on our abatement calendar. So this authorization doesn't mean go out and do it now. What it means is that you're authorizing us to calendar it with the rest of our abatement list, as your Board is aware. We have an annual list of the priority abatements based on the priority lists that we establish, one being the least egregious, you know, point total of seven being the most egregious in the county. What we do is we budget annually and start with the worst-case scenario and work our way down the list, and then every year, we generate a new list based on the amount that you allow us to budget for. In this case, this isn't the most egregious, but it will go on the list, and we will be working down the list this year. And so what we're doing is seeking your authorization to calendar it, and then if we do, if we are able in this calendar year to abate this nuisance, then what we do is we collecting the invoices from our contractor for the cleanup, and then serve the parcel owner with a, essentially, an invoice for the cleanup, and if it's not paid, then lien and assess the property. The, in both cases, the citation and the notice violation, we did follow the appropriate notice procedure. We did send certified and first-class mail, and we also posted the property directly. We do have the evidence in your Board packet to demonstrate that we followed that process, and at this point, we've had no contact directly from the owner of parcel to date. If there's any questions.
Ms. Sandell?
Not a question, just a thank you for prioritizing this. This is a very much an eyesore, but also a bit of a dangerous situation. There's a lot of questionable activity that is seen coming on and off of this property, and it is next to a major school bus stop in the area. Up country, a lot of different neighborhoods come together to one big stop, and there are, there could be upwards of 20 different families that could be getting their kids to and from the bus at this stop. So it is a high priority, and I appreciate your attention to it.
Oh, by the way, just an additional note, this doesn't necessarily mean that we will perform the abatement directly. If the owner sees what's happening on public access, contacts, hey, we'll clean it up, then that means we don't have to respond, and the only thing that would be due is any fines or the cost to actually process the case. So if they contact us, we will work with them to let them clean up the site on their own.
Thank you. Is there any other Board comment? Is there any public comment regarding this item? Mr. Bolger?
Morning, Board. Mark Bolger, Mountain Ranch. I pulled this item just to say thank you to county staff. I really appreciate code compliance and building tackling this issue. It's been a, as Supervisor Andal stated, it's not just an eyesore, it's a public safety concern. I don't have an adjoining parcel, but very nearby. Other neighbors and I have witnessed campfires there in the summer. There's nefarious characters that have been squatting there. I'm cognizant that, you know, the wheels of government turn moderately. And I understand that, you know, there's processes that code compliance has to go through, but, you know, it's been going on two-plus years now since neighbors and I have really spearheaded trying to get this place cleaned up. Several years prior to that, I've hauled countless amounts of garbage off the roadway. Unfortunately, there's a BLM parcel that abuts this property that, you know, when problems like this proliferate, it becomes a magnet, and the dregs of society just dump their garbage right there, and, you know, too lazy to go up to the transfer station, I suppose. Anyway, I really appreciate staff taking this, and, you know, I hope the Board has unanimous approval on getting this place cleaned up. And if the property owner is listening, sorry. I really hope you can get your property cleaned up, and calling your neighbors will help, but something needs to be done about this. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment? Any comment online?
There's no online public comment.
With that, I'll bring it back to the Board. Oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
No, if Ms. Sandell would like to make a motion, I'll second it.
Motion made.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, we'll move on to item number 24.
Item 24, resolution, Human Resources, adopt a resolution authorizing changes to the position control list, including those associated with the fiscal year 2025-26, recommended budget adopting position, position adjustments, and new job descriptions effective June 28, 2025.
Thank you. Ms. Hawkins?
Good morning, Chair Hubbard, members of the Board, Judy Hawkins, Human Resources and Risk Director. And I pulled this item today because I did want to make sure to bring to your attention some minor adjustments that were made since the Board approved the item. And so some of the areas that were adjusted is originally, you approved the reclass of a senior planner to planning manager, a reclass of planner to senior planner, with working with bargaining units, and then also trying to move this forward. We are asking to, for the approval of the planning manager position, we will do an internal recruitment, and then there may be movement within the department for a senior planner. And so this way, we can get planning, the assistance that they need sooner than later. And so that's one of the adjustments. It does not change appropriations at all.
Supervisor Stoppa?
That, what I just heard from you is effectively creating a new position?
So it is...
And we aren't subtracting a new position? But at this time, with the, do you want to correct me if I'm hearing it wrong?
No, you are correct, but the reason is because we were just going to do a reclassification, which was included as part of the original budget. But in negotiations with the union, they would prefer that we actually add the position, recruit for it, and then delete the old position. They felt that was a more appropriate way to handle this, so that is what...
So we are deleting the position after the fact? But you said, you just said, we can fill in this senior plan later.
Because we were, as part of the original item, we were reclassing the two positions. One was a lower-level planner to a senior, and then one was for the planning manager, but the union would like for us to handle this this way. And so eventually, we would delete the position vacated by the planner.
But for now, that, effectively, that salary sitting there as a placeholder, we just won't be filling it.
It will be present.
So technically, that is a change to the budget until we fix the issue and go back and delete it later.
Absolutely correct.
Just saying. I mean, I don't have, I don't have a problem with it, Judy. I get what the union's negotiating with you and everything, and this is our process. But when we say that, to say we're fixing, my opinion is, it does affect the budget technically, but later, it'll be leveled back again. That's where I was going with it. I'm sorry. I'm not trying to be hard about it, I'm just, that's the facts for the moment.
That is correct.
But I had a comment on this also, because Ms. Follendorf brought this up earlier when it came to the other special revenues and how we're moving forward on the budget. And, you know, I'm having, I said it during the meeting when we were discussing this, and we were discussing one person, and then the whole, I said at that time, we're going to have to make hard decisions later. And we're still going to have to make that decision later. At this point, I'm just reminding everyone, this is until December, and, huh? I'm September. My apologies. Until September, and if, and with certain people, you know, I still mean what I said, but if things are the way they are and my position changes, I will be clear about it when it does. Because reality may mean we have to go down the hard road, and if there's no other way to stabilize that, that, those reoccurring costs with revenue, I'm going to have to make the hard decision. That's all.
Okay. Is there any further Board discussion on this?
This new position, what's the salary range?
Management?
I don't know what's in here, but I want to make sure.
And so the salary range for the planning manager will be, it's 4794 to 5893. It's range 210. I apologize, I don't have that annual calculated out.
Okay. Oh, were you going to follow that up? Go ahead. The other thing about the change of the budget, because you said that we were planning on deleting a position and then changing that to a senior one, but adding the management position, where was the savings to the position? I'm trying to figure that out, how it goes on the bottom line.
So originally, there was, there were a few proposed layoffs.
Right.
One that would have affected this department, but during the discussion, the decision was made to pull one-time funding forward to cover that position, at least through the next fiscal year. Of course, when we revisit the budget in September, the Board could make different decisions, but that's how that was handled. And then these positions had been calculated into the budget originally.
Based off that?
Correct.
And that was the difference?
That was the difference on the one position with the plus position of manager.
Microphone. Thank you. Could you hear me? Okay.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there any public comment regarding this?
I actually have a couple more things on here.
Okay, keep going.
So, and so some good news is we are also withdrawing the request to change the FTE of a library assistant, which was position 6441. This was a limited-term position, and First Five has received funding for this position. And so we no longer have to change the FTE for this next fiscal year. And then because it is a limited-term position, if funding changes, then we will bring back those changes. And then we have added a classification, which is extra hire only. We are not asking for a position. We are just asking for the classification post-bar law clerk. Since we are having a very difficult time in recruiting... Since we are having a very difficult time in recruiting attorneys, this would allow us to bring in candidates who are waiting for their bar results. They will be able to do higher-level functions than a lot of clerical staff. They just can't act in the capacity of an attorney. But they can help write up documents, do research, all of those things to, to help re, some relief on the other attorneys in the office while they're waiting for their bar results, which typically I think take about six months.
Yeah, if I, I'll take the opportunity for a free, for some free publicity. And we did, I worked with, with Judy and with the District Attorney's Office on developing this classification. As Judy mentioned, I don't think it's a secret that both District Attorney Uke and I have had some difficulties in recruiting attorneys, I think along with other cities and counties in California. And so the idea here, as Ms. Hawkins mentioned, is that folks who have graduated from law school, have taken the bar, but are awaiting bar results, could come in as this post-bar law clerk, see what it's like to work in a prosecutor's office or in a civil, public law office, get some experience. And then potentially then if they do, you know, once they obtain bar results and are admitted, could potentially become a deputy. So get our hooks in them a little early, get some good experience for folks. And of course, if we were to underfill a vacant position that temporarily, it would also be a cost savings for that period of time.
Right, that's it.
And that is it. Okay. Any other board comments?
Ju- ju- just one thing. I, I completely understand. I appreciate you coming up here and letting us know the changes. I noticed some of the changes while we're going through it. And I, I know this is kind of getting down in the weeds, but when we vote as a board for the budget to move forward, to approve it this time, we, we vote for a certain amount of things. And, you know, and sometimes, you know, I see some stuff like this and I'm like, what the heck, right? Is there a way when we agendize this stuff to let the Board know within the agenda that these have been further changed prior to coming to the Board based and not related to the original vote? I, I'm curious, just so that my head isn't stirring like they're doing this anyway, you know? Or, you know, you know where I'm going with it.
Yeah, and Supervisor Stopper, we did, we did try to write some language in saying something like position adjustments from recommended budget or some position changes, including those directed at recommended budget. But we could separate it out into two separate items in the future if that would be kind of cleaner.
I, I, yeah, I, I'm not sure if the rest of the Board has appetite for that. I just, you know, beyond, because when, when I get a agenda like this, and even with the so many days, you know, how, how many? 593 pages? I get really good at skipping the formality part of it. So I miss some of the, when I start getting down into the finer stuff when it comes to numbers and everything. So like the front page and some, a lot of things are like, okay, usually a template. So I get it down to 300 pages and going through numbers and everything else instead of 593. So sometimes I'll miss those small nuances and then I get it and I'm like, what the heck? So I just, just letting you know. I, I don't know if the rest of the Board has appetite for that. It's, I, maybe I'm being finicky about it. So, okay, you know what? I said it out loud. Maybe give me a call. All right. Thank you.
Is there any further board comment? Seeing none, is there any public comment regarding this? Any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
With that, I'll bring it back to the Board.
I'll move.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you just vote yes? You moved it too. Okay, just making sure.
Madam Clerk?
Item 25, resolution, Integrated Waste Management, adopt a resolution pursuant to Government Code 25830, reestablishing the annual solid waste parcel fee schedule adopted through Resolution 2023-0627R047 for the 2025 fiscal year.
Ms. Cashy?
Good morning, Chair, respective members of the Board, Jennifer Cashy, Director of Integrated Waste. I pulled this item as an opportunity to amend the item, to add their resolution by the City of Angels consenting to the solid waste parcel fees and their jurisdiction. There was a technical error on their part prior to getting this to us before we posted the agenda, so I apologize for the amendment now, but I do have copies for your Board and members of the public if, if should choose.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll just piggyback on what Ms. Cashy said. Government Code requires that the Board implement the solid waste parcel fee ordinance before every, I'm sorry, via resolution prior to the start of every fiscal year. And if it's to apply within the city, then the city has to consent to that. So that's what this, this resolution is from, the city doing that.
Reestablishing. I want to make that, sure that's clear.
That's right.
Not, not new establishing.
No, these are consistent with the status quo-
Right.
-fees that we have before us today.
Thank you, Ms. Cashy.
Are there any board comments? Supervisor Stopper?
I'm good for the time being. Thank you, Ms. Cashy.
Is there any public comment regarding this item? Seeing none, any comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the Board.
With making a motion on this, I just want to thank you for all the, the work coming to this point. We have some more work to get moved forward when it comes to how we're gonna go forward with the commercial parcel fees in the future. But until this point, thank you. And with that, I have a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on now to the regular agenda. Item number 30.
Item 30, action item, Economic and Community Development, receive a presentation from the San Andreas Merchants Association and to approve a mural painting on the Hubbard Building in San Andreas, California.
Good morning, Mr. Galino.
Good morning, Chair Hubbard and Honorable Board. Kathy Galino, your Economic and Community Development Director. And with me today, I have Kate Allen, who is the President of the San Andreas Merchants, and many other hats she wears. So Kate approached Admin and Economic Development regarding a survey that they conducted regarding having a mural painted on the Hubbard Building facing Highway 49. And I am going to turn it over to Kate, and I will advance slides.
Thank you, Kathy.
Good morning, Chair Hubbard.
Is it on?
You're on.
Good morning, Chair Hubbard and members of the Board. Again, Kate Allen, President of the San Andreas Merchants Association. I'm here today because we are seeking Board approval to move forward with the Hubbard Building mural project. The project goal is to highlight the history of San Andreas while welcoming visitors and providing something eye-catching that will attract them to explore the Main Street Historic District, adding beautification to San Andreas as part of a bigger San Andreas revitalization effort. And the project was inspired by murals by Rand Huggett along Highway 49 in Amador County. You may have seen them in the City of Jackson particularly and at the entrance to Sutter Creek. The San Andreas Merchants Association is seeking Board approval to move forward with the mural project based on demonstrated community support. The Hubbard Building is owned by the County of Calaveras and it's located right at the entrance of Main Street, which is San Andreas's Historic District. It's currently occupied by the Calaveras Chamber of Commerce and other county staff. And it, it hosts an existing mural, which was painted by Dusty Dustin and Rod Rethell around year 1998. So pushing on 30 years old now. And you can see the existing mural pictured in the slide. San Andreas Merchants Association released an online community survey. The community survey opened March 3, 2025, and was open until April 3 of 2025. We received a total of 230 responses. The respondents were presented with three options, plus an opportunity to write in an other response to give their feedback if they had different ideas of how to move forward. The first option was no change to the mural design at all, simply to refresh the paint of the original mural, which is pictured here. Option number one received 24% of the vote. Option number two was to update the existing mural by adding a few design elements to attract visitors to historic San Andreas. I apologize for my poor use of Photoshop, but I tried to overlay some examples of the artwork provided by John Turnbow over the existing mural that would just welcome people to San Andreas and direct them to historic Main Street in this option. This option was the least favorite of the survey and received 19.43% of the vote. Included in this slide are some detailed images of those embellishments, the Welcome to San Andreas Calaveras County seat and historic Main Street this way. Both artwork was provided by artist John Turnbow, who's actually in the audience today as well. Option number three received the majority of the votes, 51.43%. And this option is to repaint the Hubbard Building with a completely new mural that includes a map of San Andreas featuring historic images like Black Bart and a gold banner, and also to include the Welcome to San Andreas signs and historic Main Street this way. This was the most popular option. Here is a detail of the San Andreas map. It includes points of interest, two local things in San Andreas, and, you know, like the Calaveras History Museum and other points of interest in San Andreas. Yep, next slide, please, Kathy.
Rivers running through Black Bart's face, is that?
Yeah, but those are, those are the main thoroughfares through San Andreas as well. I'll go back. Yep. This is just an overall chart, which shows you that option three had the majority vote of 51%. You can see option one, two, and three pictured in this table. We took the feedback that was provided through the online community service survey. There was plenty of opportunity for people to write in their thoughts about this art project. And we reviewed those and I submitted them and reviewed them with the artist. And we made a few changes and updates to the original mock-up that was used in the survey. Again, the original mock-up was a poorly done Photoshop rendering by myself. And so John Turnbow, the artist, did an, an additional mock-up that includes adding background color, some local flowers, and repositioning the artwork to provide a more cohesive design, which you see pictured here. This would be the official proposed mural for the Hubbard Building project that we're looking for your approval and/or feedback and questions today. There will be no fiscal impact to the County of Calaveras for this project. San Andreas Merchants Association will be applying for grant funding. There is a grant called the T-Mobile Hometown Grant Program, Revitalizing Small Towns, that is a good option for this project. As well, we will be seeking business sponsorships and private donations. I wanted to provide an example of other local artwork done by artist John Turnbow. He has recently been painting murals in San Andreas that have received a lot of positive feedback from the community. It demonstrates his ability and his willingness to get the project done efficiently and effectively. And it has been a very popular feature in San Andreas recently. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about this project and look for your feedback.
Supervisor Stopper?
With respect to Gary's district, this is a county-owned building, everything. I love the idea of, you know, updating and changing mural and making it colorful for San Andreas. And I appreciate the artist, you know, I mean, he does a lot of great work. Just a suggestion and some feedback from my perspective is getting the community involved maybe a little bit more by maybe proposing some more ideas from the high schoolers and, you know, across the county maybe and everything. And the community so that they could do proposals and maybe the, in the end, if there's one picked, like that they work with the artist to, to make it, you know, more community involvement and everything. I think, I think from my perspective, I do like his artwork. I think that, you know, more options out there and getting the community more involved from my perspective, but to the rest of the Board.
May I answer Supervisor Stopper that John Turnbow is the art teacher at Mountain Oaks currently? And he knows a lot of art students in the community. And I think that an idea that he had talked about is the actual painting of the mural will probably include student volunteer help as, as a project to incorporate the community in the project as well.
That's phenomenal. I'm to the design and everything so that, you know, what, even before it goes up, that we get more community, and I think that's phenomenal on both ends, so.
Supervisor Toffenelli?
Thank you, Mr. Stopper, for your comments. We did reach out to the community. We, we were, this is total community input on this and you could see the results of how it was voted on. They spent a lot of time on this and presenting this to the community. So I think the community part of it, sure, you could still reach out to the community, but there's been a lot of input on this. And the design that was chosen was like 50%, 51% agreed to that was the best option. So I, I'm in favor of it. I think it's a great project. I think for San Andreas, when, when the, when the Caltrans completes their project, their shop project to this, to the county, I think it will stand out. It'll be, it'll be a very nice attraction to get people to stop, you're right, in San Andreas. It will just stand out. And with, with the hand, with the finger pointing down Main Street is a great, a great thing. So I'm in favor of it, as we talked before.
Thank you, Supervisor Toffenelli.
Anybody else?
I'd like to jump in and just say that I think we're missing an ace. I think that the backside of Hubbard Building is probably the most important part of it. Please take down the sign, that finger point. I mean, you, you could do so much more with the back of the building. My feeling is that there's too much information on the side of the building right now, and I'd love to see that spread out to the backside of the building because that's where you really see it. And as you're driving by, you're not gonna get all of that information. And I just think that if it were simpler and more spread out, I also think that, that moving it up into the windows isn't a bad thing and having a hard line underneath those windows isn't, isn't necessarily. I, I'd just love to see more art covering it. But I would take a look at, if you, if you can, to using part of that at the back of the building because there's a lot of information there and I don't think you'll get it as you drive by.
Supervisor Andal?
I just want to say thank you to the San Andreas Merchants Association for this project and all that's happening to beautify San Andreas and add additions such as this. And surveys are hard. I see a public health employee in the room. Surveys are hard. It's hard to get people to do them. So, you know, I think the results you got are pretty good for a survey. And I think he does excellent work and I would also love to see a continuation. Thank you.
So as this is an actual, is there any public comment regarding this item?
Capital facilities. Just have one question in regards to the mural. I think it's cool. I like the artwork onto it. I think it's tasteful. Just a quick question. What happens in the case of, like we often see with my department, and hopefully you don't see it for very long, but vandalism, graffiti? If somebody were to go and deface that mural, what happens? Do we pay for repairs? Does the artist pick up that process? Does the artist pick up that process? Because if it's a mural, you know, from the facility standpoint, we would be very hesitant to do anything with it, right? So then it's sitting with that problem there. So I'm just curious as to what happens if that does come up, which it does.
So.
Thank you, CEO.
Chair Hubbardry, could I address that? Prior to this mural being painted on the building, we will need to do an MOU with the San Andreas Merchants Association in which we would probably spell out those very types of issues and how those might be handled.
And just to remind you, there's an existing mural that's been there for almost 30 years.
Yes.
On the county-owned building.
We might want to think of also maybe raising it so that it's out of, and especially if you're in the back of that building, you won't be able to access any of that. Oh, hang on just a second. Come up to the podium.
There's a.
This is the artist.
There's a fixative that you can put on it that not, I mean, it might not do everything, but it will definitely block out permanent damage and make it harder to ruin a mural. My mother was also a muralist and it's worked well on her paintings that she's done in the past. So it would be maybe not fix it 100%, but it would definitely make it easier to clean if somebody were to spray paint on it or do something like that. It's pretty common that you would have to cover it anyways to protect from sun fading and everything else. So it would, there's a solution for it, you know. That's all.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
I have one question for you. What's the timeframe? How long will it last before it starts downgrading and fading out? Do you have any length of time?
I'm not 100% sure. It depends on the kind of paint you use and also the type of fixative you put on top of it. But I know that the type that I looked at said that it can last up to 25 to 30 years. But you would have to reapply coats of the clear on top of it and that would protect it more. Whereas they re-clear it every five years or something like that.
I believe that's a south face. So that significantly lowers the number as with roofs. But, but, you know, with that, you know, what you said for upkeep prolongs it.
The last one has lasted 30 years.
And it really is just now starting to crack and look kind of like it, you know, needs help. So three years is good.
Ms. Mazzafaro.
Kathy Mazzafaro. I'm not here in my usual capacity. I'm going to do that in about three minutes, I hope. But I am here as a member of the San Andreas Merchants Association. First, in answer to your question, the fixative that John referred to is exactly the sort of fixative that Dusty Dustin put on the existing mural. And it has lasted 25 to 30 years. I share your concern about graffiti because our Art Council gallery is right there on the Main Street. The interesting thing is, is as we've done different projects, the only time we have graffiti is on the wall you never see. It's underneath the probation department. I know because we currently have graffiti on the gray wall underneath the probation department. And so when, you know, when something like that happens, we either get out a paintbrush and go over it or we call maintenance and they're always out there. But it's a lot less of a problem than you think. And that's all I'm going to say on that particular subject. But I guarantee you a lot of work went into this. We all know how I love committees.
Thank you. Mr. Bolger.
Hello, Mark Bolger. Property owner, business owner, directly across the street from the Hubbardry Building. I have to admit, I was a little worried when I first saw the Photoshop job that Kate did, but I'm confident now it's going to be okay. Jokes aside, Kate and the Merchants Association are doing amazing work for San Andreas. I voted emphatically yes for the mural. Pleasure to meet you, too. We're looking forward to it, hopefully. I think it's great. It's going to be a nice, attractive eye catcher when, as Supervisor Toffenelli said, when Caltrans, knock on wood, gets the new highway redo done through town there. Yeah, I hope the board has support on this and I agree with Mr. Hubbardry. Since the building adorns your name, you know, might as well use the backside, too, if you guys are remitable to it. But, and if the artist is open to it as well. But yeah, all good things happen in San Andreas. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment?
Hi, I'm Joanne Elliott. I think it's a great idea. I'm on Murphy's Community Club. I just want to give a little shout out because I've lived in Murphy's for over 30 years and the park is getting a lot of graffiti. We're getting a lot of people destroying property, coming in and riding on things, breaking things, breaking lights, breaking, leaving garbage. I just, I think it's a great idea, but it's not like it was 20 years ago. So I think it's a really smart idea to put something over it because things are changing. I mean, our community unfortunately is changing a little bit. And so this protection would be a really smart thing to do.
So Joanne, can I just address that for a second? I just want to let you know that our Sheriff's Department, Sheriff Whiting, put Lieutenant Stark in charge of a little community group that we have in Murphy's now.
I know.
So you know all about that, the WhatsApp group and all the people that are on it. So we're, I think we're talking about a very small group of.
And it might be something San Andreas wants to do, is put the WhatsApp because it really has helped us to catch the culprits.
Yeah.
And having the parent's support and kind of trying to nip it in the bud before it gets out of control. That's, I just want people to be aware of it.
Joanne, thank you so much. Is there any other public comment? Any comment online?
We have no online public comment.
I'll bring it back to the board.
I, again, I'm in favor of this. They've involved the community. Community's in favor of it. I think it's a great idea. Again, once Caltrans is their shop project, I think this will stand out. As far as the west side of the building, I believe the Calaveras Village Bureau has a big banner up there right now on that side of it advertising Calaveras County. So, and I'm not opposed to having something over there. Maybe that can be redone through the community for that side of it, once we get past this. But I'm in favor on this side because again, it's right there on Main Street. There's going to be dividers there with plants and things going through there. So you're going to be slowing down anyway. And it'll be standing out right there. And if you put it on the west side, Main Street may not know, but this way, again, with the fingers and Main Street right there, stop and see it. I think it's great. I think it's a good idea. I think it's a, I'm in favor of it.
Will you move?
Sorry, if I may interrupt before we make a motion. I just want to, because it wasn't specifically mentioned in the item, to CEO Hitchcock's point, if the board does approve this, green light this to go forward, is that with the understanding that we'll have an agreement in place between the county and the Merchants Association to figure out how it's going to go and for ongoing maintenance?
Maintenance until court.
Thank you.
And now we'll be coming back to the board that agreement for our approval. Are you going to prove it?
I think it's up to you whether you want to just direct staff to have that in place or whether you want it first or whether you want it to actually come back to the board.
Well, I'm in favor myself in having it in place. We have that all in writing. Everybody agrees to it going forward. There is some concern about what I talked about, the divider with some plants and vegetation in it with Caltrans. We're going through some projects with that. But I think it's beneficial to everybody concerned knowing exactly what each entity's job is when it comes to it. So, yeah. I'm in favor of that. If you want to craft that and bring it back, have them sign it and bring it back and have the board approve it. Or I'm open to the CEO and you crafting that, signing with them. As long as we have something in writing.
I can certainly work with administration on that.
Was that a motion, sir?
That is a motion. May I say something with my second?
Yes.
Great community outreach. I think I misstated my point and it was nothing towards the work that's gone into this. I just was thinking more towards getting more members of the community to get a piece of their heart in the artistry. But at the same time, I complimented the artist and, you know, as to the past work. So that was my point behind it. I wasn't saying the community outreach wasn't done. I was just thinking about getting more people with a little piece of their heart into the artistry across the county. That's all.
Thank you. With that second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Kate.
Thank you very much.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Yes, please. We'll be back at 12:05. Thank you, we are back. Madam Clerk, we are moving on to item 31, please.
Item 31, action item. Administrative office. One, receive a status update on the animal shelter project. Two, authorize staff to negotiate a contract with LDA partnership for bid phase and construction phase services and return to the board for contract approval. Three, direct staff to begin work on the project bid package. And four, direct staff to continue working with the auditor's office on financing options and return to the board with funding recommendations.
Thank you, Ms. Andreola.
Good afternoon, Chair and honorable members of the board. Jamie Andreola, Principal Admin Analyst with the Administration Department. I'm here to give you a brief update on the animal shelter project and ask for your direction on how we move into the next phases of work. Just for a quick recap, where we've been. This project has been in motion since late 2022 when the county issued an RFQ, Request for Qualifications for Architectural and Engineering Services. In April 2023, the county entered into a contract with LDA Partners for Phase 1, which covered programming and conceptual design. That design was presented to your board in January 2024. On May 14th, 2024, your board approved a Phase 2A contract with LDA for design development and construction documents. Since then, LDA has been working on those drawings. The plans were submitted for third-party plan review in April and LDA received comments back from Building Fire and Public Works in May and early June. LDA has been addressing those comments and confirmed last Wednesday, June 18th, that the resubmital went to the county's third-party plan reviewer. We're expecting updated comments within the next two weeks and there could be one more round of revisions depending on that feedback. To keep the project moving forward, the next step is entering into a new contract for the bid and construction phases. As we get ready for that step, we thought it was important to pause and consider whether it makes more sense to continue with the current design team or bring in a new firm. After weighing the risks and what's needed to finish this project efficiently, staff is recommending that we stay with LDA and I want to explain why. Animal shelters are complicated facilities. They include medical areas, animal housing, isolation zones, and very specific mechanical and plumbing requirements. LDA has specialized experience in this space and is considered one of the leading shelter architects in the state. They've taken this design through every step so far and have us nearly ready for permit. Because of that, bringing in a new firm at this point would come with some real risks. Even though the construction drawings are close to complete, there's still a lot of design intent that lives with the team who created them. A new firm would have to spend time getting up to speed on the decisions that were made, why things were drawn a certain way and how the systems fit together. That slows things down and increases the chance of misalignment when bid documents are developed. The contract we're proposing isn't for more design work. It's for specific deliverables like preparing the Division 0 and Division 1 documents, helping finalize the bid package and supporting us through construction. We've emphasized to LDA how important it is to maintain a strong communication and keep this project moving forward. They understand our expectations and we've been clear about the level of coordination needed as we move into the next phase. Continuing with the team that developed the design gives us the best chance to stay on track, keep things consistent and avoid delays, duplicated work or added risk. These are the risks associated with moving to a different architectural and engineering firm at this point in the project. Loss of design continuity. A new firm may not fully understand the reasoning behind key design decisions which can lead to mistakes or misinterpretations. Delays from onboarding. They would need time to review the entire design package before starting their portion of the work. Mismanaged, mismatched documents. Division 0 and Division 1 documents have to line up with the construction drawings. If they aren't coordinated, it can create confusion, drive up RFIs and lead to change orders. It weakens accountability. If something goes wrong, it becomes harder to determine whether it's a design issue or bidding specs issue and harder to hold anyone accountable. And duplicate costs. A new firm would likely need to redo work that's already been done, quality control, drawing reviews, clarifications, and that means paying for it again. So again, staff is recommending that we continue with LDA for the next phase, reduce risk, preserve the design intent and keep the project moving forward. On the cost side, the most recent estimate from LDA shows construction hard costs of 6.64 million for the doghouse and 3.12 million for the cat house and admin building. That brings the full construction estimate to about 9.76 for everything. When we add in soft costs, things like furnishings, animal enclosures, utility connections, contingency, When we add in soft costs, things like furnishings, animal enclosures, utility connections, contingency, architectural services during construction, we're looking at about $9.4 million for the doghouse only, and about $13 million for the full build-out. On financing, we've been working with the auditor's office and have been in contact with IBank. This project qualifies for their Infrastructure State Revolving Fund program. With interest rates currently between 4.16% and 5.46%, we may qualify for a discount rate under the rule, underserved criteria, and IBank is currently reviewing that. The auditor's office also met with K&amp;M Public Finance last week to explore additional financing strategies. So today, staff is requesting your direction to negotiate and return with a new contract with LDA for bid phase and construction phase services, begin developing the full bid package, and continue pursuing financing options. Once those steps are in place, we'll return with a full budget update and a request to advertise for bids, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Does the board have any questions? Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yes, I have the questions. I'm not sure what the issue is with LDA, but we gave them direction in May of 2024. And they just sent the drawings out. It took them almost over a year to get the drawings done. When we gave them direction, they had conceptual drawings. What I had to do is construction drawings to do. And that's almost insane, the amount of time it's taken them to do this position. I'm in construction, and just this 5,000-square-foot building, that long, just to get construction drawings, when it was almost there when they presented it to us. It seems like this is not a priority to them. Apparently, the amount of money for this is not anywhere the larger ones that they're doing or something, so it kind of keeps going back for some reason, and they're not really moving forward on it. If I'm going to award them a contract here to go forward on it, I need to make sure that contract has a timeframe in it, that they're held to, absolutely held to, and they can't come back and say, well, we need more time. No, this needs to be get done, it just keeps dragging on, and they're the ones that keep dragging us on over a year to get to these drawings that are not even done. They just sent them out in May for the Fire and Public Works comments, if there is any on it. I just think that if we're going forward with this, that they need to understand, they need to get it done, and here's the timeframe.
I hear you on that. I hear your concerns. I validate your concerns. I have to say, I think now doing this process, I'm new to this process of building buildings. This county hasn't done a lot of buildings. I've learned a lot in this process, and the fact that we're doing kind of three at the same time. I have to say, the DA and animal shelter done kind of similarly, where we did the schematic design first and then did the construction documents, and those seem right on pace with each other. We're about at the same stage with the DA building. However, when we did the behavioral health a little differently, and again, this is a learning curve for me, because the behavioral health was fully grant-funded, so we had all of the funding identified upfront. We did all of those services like in tandem, so the design and construction went together. So we're seeing a little bit more of an expedited system there because we did that process different. So that's definitely been a learning curve for me in our office.
Well, here's the situation. It keeps putting it off because we don't have a shovel-ready project. We don't have approved drawings for construction, and for us to go out and get grants, we're going to need a shovel-ready project. Here it is. This is what we're building. This is what we're looking funds. This is the funds we have. We need this many funds. We've had some bids on it or whatever, but we need that to go out to get funds, and it just keeps dragging on. And I'm the one that brought this thing back, and I thought by now we'd at least be further down the road where we have a grant and we might be starting construction by this time next year, or even in March or April of next year. But it doesn't look like that's going to happen right now because this thing keeps dragging on. So again, I'm looking for, if we're going to go with these people, and I have my concerns with it, that we have a date. You will be done by this date, period. Okay? That's my comments on it. And I'm not blaming you, I'm just...
Oh, no, no, no. Like I said, your concerns are very valid.
Kind of every time I see this, and I was the one that asked to bring this back, so...
Supervisor Sopper?
I agree with Gary, except for I think that we, I mean, you did say something to bring this back. We asked for it back.
That's correct, but I mean, even today, having it brought today.
Right. So, to that point, can you restate what the total cost has been for this firm so far?
So I don't have the total cost that we've spent on this contract.
Wasn't it around 500-something thousand paid already then? And then it was still 200?
It's in the...
It's in the report.
I'm asking for it to be restated.
Oh.
According to the staff report, to date, 596467 on the project altogether.
Yeah. Right, 596... And then how much are they asking for the cost moving forward?
700?
We don't have a cost, so we haven't negotiated because we haven't negotiated for the next phase. So we don't have a cost for, that's what we're wanting direction, if you are wanting, and we would bring that contract back to you. I don't have a cost for what the bid documents and construction management would need.
Yes. From my experience in the past, when working construction in the past and then being with special districts, typically, a design and management cost works up to the vicinity of about 10% a lot of times, is pretty status quo, is when they do their bid. So they generally come up with the costs early on, and then those costs go up. Now, I'm not saying this is the situation by any means, but a lot of times, from outside perspective, these things dragging out, the cost of the building going up and moving forward, then we get more coming in at 10%. I mean, time dragging on makes people money, and I have a hard time with that. So, not saying that's the situation here, because I do have to take responsibility of its mind, because we did ask them to make changes last year. And so, part of those changes is what the time is. So, to a small degree, Mr. Toffenelli is right. I would like a hard line on some dates and finish times, and I would like to, you know, and when we asked for this to come back, the reason was to bring the cost down. Now, with soft costs, which I have a hard time calling a soft cost when it adds $4 million to the total, approximately, we don't know yet. But, you know, $13.7 million, we're working our way up on cost again. So, Mr. Toffenelli, thank you. I agree. Supervisor Falendorf?
I think my comment is more of a comment rather than a question. I understand that we have allocated for this fiscal year. My concern is, after this fiscal year, as we continue to add things that come up, that come out of capital, that going into next fiscal year, we will be looking at a different budget line item than we currently are because of other items that keep popping up. And the more we start taking away from capital because of other things that have come up, my worry is, as you guys are investigating the finances, how that will leverage the county in getting those finances or other grants if they all say we need a 20% match. I don't know what those look like. Or will it hurt us with interest rates if we have to get a loan to leverage it? So I just want to be very conscientious as we move forward. I fully support going forward with the next step in this phase, absolutely, but my concern is, we keep adding more to capital, and it's going to severely impact your staff's ability to find financing. So, it's just a comment, so, yeah. Other than that, thank you, Jamie. You've done a wonderful job.
Supervisor Hantle?
I have no questions that weren't already answered. My questions were timeline of nature and what creative solutions we were looking at. Thank you for your work.
I would like to jump in and just say thank you as well. Again, we were supposed to have had this in June, and then it was July, and we still don't have everything in July. So again, I'm with my colleagues in finding a timeframe is incredibly important. I'd also like to ask, and I don't know that it's appropriate right now, but I would love to ask Administration if we could meet with Gimme Shelter and Focus and just coordinate everybody's efforts going forward in looking for funds. My concern is that we're going to start stepping over each other and knowing, you know, who's going where to ask for what. I think sometimes we might go someplace and get $50, whereas if we were to paint the full picture and it came with full board support, we would get far more. So I'd ask if we could do that.
We're happy to set up some type of joint meeting so that we can create strategies on how we move forward with the funding.
Yeah, thank you.
And our office does, just for knowledge and transparency, our office does meet with Focus pretty regularly to just keep them updated, and then they're getting the information out there for us, so it keeps it a pretty streamlined process. And then both Gimme Shelter and Focus have done a really good job of looking at different grants and providing our office some research opportunities, which we've been working with Jocelyn. Some of them unfortunately haven't been, we either don't qualify or there's something wrong with them, but we've been keeping that open line of communication, so we are hopefully just doing that one kind of lane of communication, but we could definitely look at other options.
Would you please? That would be great. Thank you. And also, just out of curiosity, I mean, it's getting so close now, you can almost smell it, and it feels really good. What happens with admin right now when construction starts? I know I'm sort of putting the tail before the dog, pun intended, but is that also factored in? Because I don't think I've ever seen any cost for actually moving the animal shelter, because it's going to have to move.
That's all going to be part of, you're talking about the actual...
Yeah, that's actually incorporated, because I've never seen it.
It will be part of the construction docs, and that's what goes into that Division Zero and Division One that talks about how the project rolls out, which is why it's so important with LDA at this point, because they're the ones that have created the plan up to this point to help carry that through.
Got it. Thank you. Is there any further board comment?
When it comes back from public comment, I have some comments to make.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment on this issue? Debbie?
The whole room's full.
Yes. So you know how you... And we're all here for the same reason, you guys.
And you're going to speak for them all? Is that...
I don't know. Maybe. I just want you to know.
It's time these people stand up, so they know.
You've got a lot of public support.
And we've all got other people in the community with us.
Thank you. Yeah, so if we could just have Debbie speak, thank you.
So Focus and Gimme Shelter will be more than happy to meet with you. We meet anyway. Focus can't legally raise the funds, but each board member of Focus is doing something individually more with Gimme Shelter. It's all the same thing. Anyway, Gimme Shelter, yeah, Gimme Shelter's raised almost 50K, right? Almost?
We should be, we're close to 50K.
And we have some pretty big private donations. If you say yes, we're going ahead. So we really, I'm here, I've been waiting 24 years for this, because that's how long I've been volunteering up there, and I've been on every committee for a shelter in that 24 years, so I know all, everything, all the dirt's buried, everything, but please go forth with this. LDA, they may have some problems, but by far, they're the best, because over that 24 years, we have looked at, I can't tell you how many architects in the past, and these people are top-notch, seriously, did a good job in picking them initially. So, please go, yes, and go forward. The cost is going to go up if you don't do it now. Okay, so, thanks.
Mr. Butler?
My name's Christopher Butler, publisher of Calaveras2026election.com. August 27, 2024, I addressed the issue of the animal shelter. It's a blog post at calaveras2026election.com called "Calaveras County Supervisors Commit to Inhumane Animal Treatment." I am going to read some highlights from that. "This board's diversionary responses and tactics distract from the tragedy underlying a government riddled with public corruption and fiscal negligence that for decades has inhumanely treated generations of innocent, helpless, and wholly dependent animals in its custody. There have been 12 grand jury reports since 2010. These grand jury reports and the Calaveras government again squander the public's goodwill and faith, spinning an illusion of hope that you'd all finally do the right thing for our vulnerable shelter animals. If not for these wonderful dedicated volunteers from Gimme Shelter who tolerate the same deplorable conditions the animals are forced to survive in, the situation would be far more critical. I found your animal shelter money, so everybody follow along. $4.16 million is already allocated. Terminate the LDA partner's contract, and that's a half a million dollars. Put out a competitive bid for a revised, appropriately scaled animal shelter. Terminate all plans and funding for the DA's new office building due to numerous allegations of her quid pro quo corruption, and that's $6 million more. Next, fully defund the CBB and the Chamber of Commerce of undeserved TOT revenue for another $450,000. Just like that, over $11 million for new compassionate, caring Calaveras animal shelter." This shameful board is demanded to, I'm sorry, that's from last year. "I am trying to launch a national public relations campaign engaging preeminent animal rights organizations, including PETA, focusing on nearly four decades of willful animal cruelty caused by inhumane Calaveras government that refuses to prioritize funding due to its endemic corruption. If anybody would like to help me out, I have 200 blog posts on my website regarding endemic corruption by this board. I am backordered 115 other blog posts. Shame on all of you."
Is there any other public comment? With any online?
We have no online public comment.
Great, I'll bring it back to the board. Gary?
Yeah, I'm looking at what's on our project or on our agenda, and it says there's six items listed here to go forward, and one of them, number one, is enter into a new contract with LDA Partners. Again, I'm not interested unless we have a complete timeframe that is not stretched out. What needs to be done, required to be done, shouldn't take that long. And again, we can't go forward with financing until we have a shovel-ready project, and that's based on them and finishing their drawings, which I don't think there was a lot of comments from where they sent it out here in the county. They should be having those completed here relatively shortly so we can move forward and not drag it out. And then we can at least have somewhat of a budget that we go out to when we go out for an RFP on it. And that's our main thing here, is to get it out for an RFP and get financing for it. So I'm hoping that this can come back to the board. All these six items can get done relatively quickly, and you can come back to the board, if not in July, in August. And we can move forward in August, and we can have a see the plans, and we can agree on them, and we can get them out there for an RFP.
I think August is totally manageable to bring that back. I don't know about how much we'll have invested in the financing portion, but some more research will definitely have been done.
Yeah, as long as we have shovel-ready project, I think financing will be out there. I think we should not have a problem moving forward with financing with it, so that's my comments. We need to get this done relatively quickly. Again, it's been going on for years. We're at this point, I don't know how it got dragged for the last 15 months, because it came back in March last year, but we need to finalize and get it out there relatively
And I would just add that my faith in LDA is in having been to the Elk Grove Shelter and seeing what they have done, and if we can end up with even something that's a facsimile of that, it's well worth sticking with this. So with that, I'll make a motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Jamie.
Can we take a quick break? This is going to be cleaned up.
Okay. Okay, can we take a five-minute break? Thank you.
I expect to see all of you back here in August, so we can finalize this thing, get
Okay, we are back, and we are on to item number 32. Madam Clerk?
Item 32, ordinance planning. One, conduct a public hearing. Two, adopt a subsequent mitigated negative declaration pursuant to sequestra. Three, adopt an ordinance amending the zoning of APN 14010041, located at 626 Outback Way in Roba Flat from Residential Agricultural with a 20-acre minimum RA 20 to General Agricultural A1 for Shamon Norcal Properties, Inc., and authorize summary publication and a brief property description and map of the reclassified property.
Thank you. Mr. Sampson?
Good morning, members of the board. Brett Sampson, Planning Director. I have Ben Diamond here, a planner in your planning shop, to present a rezone for a cannabis operation. Take it away, Ben.
All right, good afternoon, board.
Sorry, can you hang on for a second? I'm opening a public hearing. Sorry, thank you, before I get in trouble.
Good afternoon, Ben Diamond, Planner Two. Today I have for you zoning amendment 202373 for Shamon Norcal Properties. This property is located between Jeff Davis... Oh, it's not sharing. All right. All right, so the subject parcel is located between Jeff Davis Reservoir and Railroad Flat. It's roughly 40 acres in size, and the purpose of this zoning amendment from residential agriculture to general agriculture is so that the applicant can co-locate an additional cannabis cultivation permit on their property. their property. The property is currently designated working lands, which is like resource production, but for smaller scale agriculture and forestry practices and other things of that nature. The proposed zoning of general agriculture is consistent with that land use designation as well as the other surrounding land use designations for the property. The property is currently zoned RA 20, which does allow for cannabis cultivation. However, per the current cannabis ordinance, co-location is not allowed on any RA property. But he has 40 acres and he would like to expand, so he is looking to rezone that to general agriculture. And as you can see, there are some general agriculture parcels in the bordering regions there, but it is primarily surrounded by residential agriculture, ag preserve, and rural residential properties. The proposed zoning is general agriculture, which, as you can see, is not completely unique to the area, but the other agriculture parcels are a little farther away between the ag preserve parcels and some residential. The current site has one greenhouse on it that is roughly 34,000 square feet. The current cultivation permit is for a mixed light permit, so the maximum canopy that they're allowed to have is 22,000 square feet of mature canopy. If the property is rezoned, the applicant proposes another greenhouse just below the residence on the parcel. And then once funding allows, a building for vegetation to the side of the existing greenhouse on the border of the property there.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
You just said with one cultivation permit, the max size they can go is 22,000?
With a mixed light cultivation.
With a mixed light, okay. Very, much more clear, thank you.
This is a 2024 aerial image of the property. You can see the current greenhouse that is there. It is the largest greenhouse in the county. And next to that is a processing and drying building and below it, some storage buildings and bathrooms and stuff like that. If the property is rezoned, below the existing residence there, you can see some trees will have to be removed for the new greenhouse, as well as the rerouting of the driveway. And then to the side of the existing greenhouse where the proposed vegetation building will be located, some vegetation will need to be removed as well. This is a image from staff's site inspection in January of this year, looking towards the residence where the new greenhouse is proposed. There is clearly a very large oak tree there that will have to be removed for the building, which is mitigated for in the mitigation monitoring and reporting program through the need to replace trees of certain breast height diameter, and this one would likely meet that threshold. This is looking pretty much the opposite direction from that first photo where the proposed vegetation building would go. You see, it's been already disturbed a decent amount, but some vegetation would likely need to be removed on the side there and possibly some relocation of the water tank. And this is a photo looking up where the driveway will have to be rerouted to go around the new greenhouse. And as you can see, some more trees and vegetation will also have to be removed for that, which is mitigated through the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. This project was circulated for 30 days as a part of the initial routing process to various county departments, public agencies, and state agencies. Very minimal comment was received, mostly restating of various regulations that the applicant already needs to comply with. And then on March 27, a planning commission meeting was held for this zoning amendment, and it was approved unanimously with one absence being Commissioner Roby for District 5. Under SEQA, an initial study was prepared pursuant to section 15168C1 of the SEQA guidelines to identify if any impacts were specific to this site that were not specifically contemplated by the programmatic EIR and subsequent addenda that were prepared for the cannabis ordinance. None of those factors were identified that required a subsequent or supplemental EIR to be prepared, and the site specific impacts are mitigated fully through the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. The project as designed is consistent with the general plan and zoning code, as well as consistent with neighboring and adjacent land uses and zoning. This project is tiered off the programmatic EIR that was prepared for chapter 17 dot 18, and any significant impacts have been reduced to a level that is less than significant through the mitigation monitoring and reporting program. And the project as designed promotes the public health, safety, and general welfare of the county. With that, I'll hand it back to you.
Thank you very much. Are there any board comments? Supervisor Stoppard?
Um, overall, in this project, I'd like to hear what the District 2 supervisor has to say, but just one thing, not necessarily to do with this, looking at Jeff Davis Reservoir and where the water treatment plan is for CPUD. The color there is for working lands. Maybe a discussion later offsite about public institutional and how those public entities fall in. And, okay, thank you.
So I studied the public hearing that the planning commission had on this and all of the input that they received during it. This has been a very rigorous process that the landowner has gone through. And, you know, everything is in alignment with our general plan, with chapter 17.18. The, it appears that the owners are doing things correctly. And I think that that's very important, specifically in this industry, to set that bar really high and to do things, you know, dot every single I and cross every T. During the planning commission meeting, there was some concerns from neighbors. And I watched as the landowner took measures to mitigate those concerns. And I hope that that continues, and I think it's very important that, you know, in our rural areas, we have the ability to have agriculture and use our land accordingly while respecting our neighbors. You know, there's, there's a lot of things that can be very controversial. Obviously, this is a big one that we've all been through, but it is agriculture and it is an economic driver in our communities.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
And the, the, the.
Oh, come up to the podium.
Thank you. And regarding those comments, on the same week, I submitted to the neighbor that was complaining regarding the view, a set of trees that were available in the vicinity even up to Stockton. So we got in 40 Italian trees, the taller ones.
Cypress?
Cypress, yes. We got 40, we got 50, but he wanted only to plant 44. So we planted that, and I actually have a picture of that as well. On the April 4th is that when we planted, so within one week, the trees were already planted. And everybody seemed to be on board with what we are doing. And that's, that's pretty much everything I can say about that. And regarding the, you mentioned something about the water. And I just would like to reassure you that every single thing that goes inside the greenhouse that is not being given to the plants, the excess water, it goes into a septic tank that is fully approved by the, by the county and with the regulation.
Neighbors, thank you. Is there any other board comment?
Um, yeah, yeah, to, to that point. You know, we, different than originally in 2016 with urgency ordinance. We put forward the new ordinance, and it's very, much more tighter and strict from my perspective than the original urgency ordinance. And you being open to your, or your, your neighbors' comments and everything, I appreciate that, and I appreciate continued staying within those guidelines because that's what I'm asking for, from my perspective, is for you guys to set the example moving forward with the few that have made it through since 2016. So thank you for being receptive to your neighbors' issues. Because I'll, I'll, I'll say that, you know, there's a saying that goes around from Jefferson is "Don't tread on me," you know, because people want to do what they want to do. Well, that's a double edged blade, because what you do on your property can affect other people and tread on them, you know? So being cognizant of the fact that there is a lake next to you that is people's water and you making sure that you don't tread on that water, thank you. I appreciate you doing that.
Thank you. Supervisor Toffenelli?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. The canopy you're looking to put up is going to be the same size as the existing one?
Yes, the, the maximum allowance for the licenses is 22,000.
2,400 feet, yeah. So does that mean you're going to put in additional buildings to accommodate? And how many additional buildings are you going to put in? And how close are those buildings going to be to the property line that is up against the residential? Because I'm looking right now and they're getting close to some of the residential properties, and that could be an issue.
That's our residential property you see on, on the, on the map.
You own those lots too? So what neighbors were complaining?
The neighbors that is at least 150 feet from the property, from the property. So we have a setback of 150 feet from the property line.
Correct.
Which we are always in, in line with. So we are 150 plus feet from the property line of the neighbor.
Yeah, and I'm looking at which ones are you claiming are yours?
His is the one that's outlined with the red dotted line.
Would you mind putting the picture, the picture of the property?
And this is.
Yes. So the one, the number five, as you can see, the one on the left hand side, top right, the top, top right corner, that number five is our residence. And the, the property, yes, perfect. So you see the, in the middle on the lower side, that's the property of the neighbor.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. You're already real close to that property line right now. You're going to be putting additional buildings in.
It's going to be further from the building. So the proposed building is further from the existing building, from the neighbor.
The addition, not, not the canopy?
No, no, no.
The, the additional buildings for the drying and processing?
That's already in place. You see the one on the, with the right?
I don't think you're following.
Below the greenhouse?
No additional processing buildings are proposed with this right now.
Okay, so this, there's only this one building?
Just the.
Existing buildings that you do.
The proposed greenhouse.
Existing buildings that you do processing in are going to be able to handle all of what you're growing in the other canopy?
Yes, sir.
So you, you won't be coming back asking to put up other processing buildings?
No, no, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Just. Just as a question, not pertinent, how many square feet is your processing building? It looks fairly.
4,000.
4,000?
4,000 square feet. Compared to the 34,000 square feet, it looks smaller, but it's 4,000 square feet.
Yeah, no, it, it looks large to me just on that, so thank you.
Is there any further public comment? Any comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you. With that, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board.
I'll make a motion to approve this.
I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Um.
Oh, and those opposed, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. Yeah, passes for.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Apologies. Lori, we're finally getting to item 33. Thank you for your patience, but hang on, we're just, we're almost there. Madam Clerk, we'll move on to item number 33.
Item 33, agreement administrative office. One, make a public finding of benefit, make a finding of public benefit. Two, approve and authorize the board chair to execute a lease agreement with Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance for continued operation of the Mountain Ranch Resource Center and Community Kitchen for a five year term and annual lease amount of $1. Three, direct staff to reissue a request for proposals for the lease of the Mountain Ranch Parkland portion of the property. And four, authorize closure of the parkland facilities, including restrooms, effectively July 1, 2025, until a new lease is executed with minimal maintenance provided for safety, fire safety, and vegetation management only.
Thank you. Ms. Adriola.
Thank you, guys. So today I'm bringing aboard an item regarding the county owned property at 7869 Whiskey Slide Road in Mountain Ranch, known as the Mountain Ranch Community Park. As you know, this parcel has historically been divided into two leased areas. The parkland, which is currently leased by the Mountain Ranch Community Club, and the Resource Center and Community Kitchen, which is currently leased by the Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance. Both of these leases are set to expire June 30, 2025. To prepare for that, the county issued an RFP in April seeking proposals for short term leases up to five years for one or both parts of the property. We extended the deadline in response to community interest, but when the final proposals were due, we received just one proposal. The proposal we received was from Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance for the Resource Center and Community Kitchen section of the park. We did not receive any proposals for the parkland. So today, we're recommending approval of a new lease with the Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance for the continued operation of the Resource Center, and we're working, looking for direction on how the county wants to proceed with the parkland portion, given that no new lease is in place after June 30. Options for the parkland, the first option, and the one staff is recommending, is to temporarily close the park once the lease expires and reissue the RFP to see if we can identify another community based group interested in taking it over. Under this option, we would recommend basic fire safety maintenance, things like weed abatement, but the public restrooms would be closed for now. Reissuing the RFP gives us a chance to reengage with community and seek a group that can manage and operate the park like other community run spaces across the county. This is the least costly option for the county and gives us flexibility. It also aligns with how we handle other county owned parks, which are all operated by local community groups, not by county staff. Another option is for the county to take over full operation and maintenance of the park itself. While this would ensure the park stays open without interruption, it comes with significant costs. We would need to hire at least one full time custodian and one full time groundskeeper, and the estimated annual cost is somewhere between 200 and 250,000, including benefits, supplies, and fuel. Beyond the direct cost, I also want to flag a broader issue. If the county takes on this park, it could set a precedent. All our current county owned parks are run by community groups, and if we start operating this one, other groups may anticipate the same support. That could mean additional long term funding and staffing needs across multiple sites. So while this option maintains public access and right of way, it opens the door to a much bigger budget impacts than just this one property. The third option would be to permanently close the park. This would eliminate the need for maintenance or staffing altogether and completely remove the cost burden from the county. But of course, it would also mean the permanent loss of a longstanding community space. This is not a decision to take lightly, especially given how important this park has been to residents in the Mountain Ranch area. So again, staff is recommending the first option, approve the new lease with Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance for the Resource Center and Kitchen, temporarily close the parkland once the lease expires, and reissue the RFP to try again to secure a community based lessie. This approach avoids a large financial commitment, preserves the opportunity for continued community use, and keeps our park, park operations model consistent across the county. That wraps up my presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions or walk through any of the options further.
Does the board have any questions? Supervisor Randall?
Because they've all hung in here for hours now, I would love to let some of the Mountain Ranch community speak that are here.
Please, come forward, Lori.
Hi. I was like, hmm, I was going to say good morning, but anyway, my name is Lori Downing, and I have been a resident of Mountain Ranch for over 30 years. My husband Steve and I have been the volunteer Mountain Ranch Community Park manager for nearing seven years. In 1979, the Mountain Ranch Community Club, otherwise known as the MRCC, received a $30,000 grant to begin construction of the beautiful Mountain Ranch Park. With a plan, a purpose, and a lot of volunteers, the clubs proceeded, the club proceeded to build the park. The members of the MRCC, along with a few other volunteers, put in the ball field. picnic tables, and improved the playground. The MRCC continued to maintain and improve the park over the following decades. My husband and I joined the club in 2017, and shortly thereafter, accepted the volunteer role of park manager and special event coordinator. We, along with the many pals of the park, have made many significant improvements and additions to the park, including the overseeing of the restrooms ADA upgrade, the dog park, added an additional playground structure, seven commercial park benches, and four commercial wheelchair accessible picnic tables. We are in the process of installing our new flagpole and a slow, solar light to guide the parkgoers back home. We meet with and listen to our community. When the public asked that we start a car show in the park, we did. When they asked that the outdated and broken merry-go-round be replaced, we worked hard, along with the car show committee of 2000 to 2024, but that doesn't sound right, and other volunteers, and local businesses to raise the funds for this expensive but totally fun piece of playground equipment. After hearing that some children that frequent the park were in need of special equipment, we responded, and we have ordered an all-inclusive playground activity, because all children should have the opportunity to play. I respectfully ask that our Board of Supervisors consider and accept the proposal from the Mountain Ranch Community Club to renew their lease for the Mountain Ranch Community Park, so that the organization that built, maintained, and improved and loves the park can continue to do so. My husband Steve and I are retiring as the management, but we would continue to support and improve the park by training and assisting the new park manager that we have found, adding new members of the pals of the park, and being on the park advisory committee for a minimum of one year. I would also ask that a temporary lease or an extension to our lease be considered. So that the park can remain open to the public, we would continue to care for it while the Board of Supervisors complete the RFP process. It's summer, and we all want to enjoy the park. Thank you for listening to me. See you in the park. I also have here, if I may, five packets of various letters that can I please respectfully submit?
Mr. Hubbard, um, when public comment's done, may I reserve some questions for them very quickly or?
Of course.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Samantha Yefovelo, and I am interested in leasing both the Mountain Ranch Park and the Resource Center. Um, in the beginning, in April, I was communicating with admin, and I was told directly that I would be notified when the RFP went out, but I was not. That was when Marcus was in admin. Um, and so, I did not have enough time to submit a proposal. Um, when I went to go try to find out how to do that, it seemed like a pretty arduous process through a third-party website, public purchase. I had never done that before, um, and that it was advertised in the Valley Springs News, which was kind of strange, because we're in Mountain Ranch. So, anyway, I wasn't familiar with that process. So, right now, I would like to request that either A, um, we're either given one more month to submit a proposal through the RFP process, or to negotiate terms with you all today. Um, both, I would like to lease both entities because of some past social dynamics that are sort of preventing community involvement. Um, with both of these entities, they're neighboring, and what we've sort of come against is that there's some division in the community. Um, I would like to try to bridge some of that in the community. Um, and I feel like the organization that I have and the, the crew of people and the community that I'm a part of can actually provide an array of different activities and events and workshops that everybody is wanting. Um, I'm working right now to recruit about 25 people to commit to weekly and monthly and quarterly community maintenance of the park and the Resource Center. Right now, there's about 10 of us that are committed, um, but we feel like we're going to need a little bit more than that. The previous organizations and, um, companies like Senders, they're all in support of continuing to update facilities or just help with equipment and mowing and weed eating. My nonprofit is Cedar Springs. It's a 501(c)(3) that has insurance for recreation, conservation work, fuels reduction work, um, which includes parks and public workshops through the NIAC. Um, and we'd be looking to do a five-year lease for $1 a year, $5 total, with some possible clause to terminate that if it really does not work out, but we're feeling confident that it will. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good afternoon. My name is Debbie Luoma, and I am the president of the Mountain Ranch Community Club. Um, it has been our privilege and responsibility to oversee the management of the Mountain Ranch Community Park for the duration of the present lease. For seven years, the actual work of management has been carried out faithfully and creatively by Steve and Lori Downing, who have given notice that they will retire from that position on June 30th, when the current lease expires. As a board, we agree that we cannot commit to an extension of the lease without enough committed volunteers to effectively run the affairs of the park. The management of the park involves hard work and dedication, day-to-day physical maintenance of land and facilities, improvement and maintenance of the ball field and playground, organization and management of events and rental of the park, and fundraising and financial management. This is a Herculean endeavor, and we recognize the indefatigable Lori and Steve for their unfailing hard work. As it has turned out, our quest for a new manager and supporting volunteers has fallen into place. We have seen an outpouring of public support and commitment to taking care of the park. We have a new manager, a revitalized park committee, and local organizations ready to share in the process. We are so grateful to the people whose vision and labor established and built the park, and we feel a solemn vocation to preserving their legacy for our children and our grandchildren. The MRCC sees itself as both a keeper of tradition and a bridge between generations for our town. We would like to continue this role into the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Doug Quintel. I'm the current president of San Andreas Rotary Club, and I need glasses, need glasses. I've got a Doolies. But I'm reading a letter for Steve here. Steve Downing, he's a valent, the volunteer park manager and has been. He's a great guy, a little shy, but he's a great guy. So, I'm going to read this one. "Good morning to our Board of Supervisors." It's not morning anymore, but we hoped it was. We were here at morning. "My name is Steve Downing. I am writing this letter in support of the Mountain Ranch Community Club's request to lease the Mountain Ranch Community Park. My wife Lori and I have volunteered to take care of the Mountain Ranch Community Park for almost seven years now. Recently, we announced that we would be retiring. Our goal is to find a way for the Mountain Ranch Community Club to continue to maintain and improve the park that its members created and built over many years with the help of our community. Care-taking of the park is a work of love. As the planning and implementation of improvements, creation, creation of schedules and events and ma- maintenance of the grounds and infrastructures almost entirely done by the club volunteers, the club through the park committee must also raise the thousands of dollars that is necessary to operate the park annually. All these things that are necessary for the continued operation of the park required hours of work by dedicated volunteers. Finding those volunteers is challenging for many organizations. Thankfully, we have been able to, to build a new coalition of organizations, club volunteers, local residents, and community leaders. These volunteers have pledged to step up and work together to make sure our park continues to be a wonderful place for families and friends, together for picnics and birthday parties, a place for children to, to play and explore the playground, a place for baseball games and concerts in the park. They have pledged to our, to continue, continue our tradition of supporting our local park for the enjoyment of our community. Our recent improvements include additional park benches, picnic tables, and a new merry-go-round. Currently, a new flagpole and a solar yard light are being installed. The park committee is currently raising funds for ball field lights, so our ball field teams can play at night games. The lights will also create opportunities for other types of evening events. I would respectfully ask that you consider our request to allow the Mountain Ranch Community Club to continue to operate the Mountain Ranch Community Park. As the founders of the park and its stewards over many years, we are committed now more than ever to its preservation and growth. Sincerely, Steve Downing, volunteer park manager."
Thank you.
And as president of the Rotary Club, we totally back these people and are giving support and help. We're, some of us live in that community, so we're on board. We know the founders. They're, you know, Phil Albert's like my dad, or my dad. Thank you, guys, for listening.
Thank you.
Hello, board members. It's nice to see you all today. My name's Kimberly Hesser. I'm a Mountain Ranch resident. I'm also a community club member and a San Andreas Rotary member. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today on the matter that touches the very heart of our community, the future of Mountain Ranch Park. For decades, Mountain Ranch Park has been the gathering place where families celebrate milestones, where neighbors connect, and where their children learn the value of community. And the center of that has been the Mountain Ranch Community Club. The community club is made up of our own residents and volunteers, people who live here, raise their families here, and step up to serve when the community needs them most. For more than a decade, the Mountain Ranch Community Club has maintained this park through wildfires, storms, lean years. They've ensured it remains safe, clean, and open for everyone. They didn't do it for profit or publicity. They did it because the park belongs to the people of Mountain Ranch. Under the community club stewardship, the park has become the home of, for countless beloved events, from baseball tournaments to community gatherings, annual events like the Easter egg hunt and the Easter sunrise service, the Fireman's Pancake Breakfast, 4-H Chili Cook-Off, Mountain Ranch Car Show fundraiser, which directly supports the park's finances. All happened because of the management skills and hard work of the community participants. The park has also played a vital role in emergency situations, serving, surging as the staging area and community gathering point during disasters like the Butte Fire. Additionally, the ball field itself is designated helicopter landing zone for medical and emergency evacuations, a critical resource in our remote rural area where minutes can even mean the difference between life and death. The community club's leadership and hands-on commitment during these situations have made a tangible difference in the people's lives. It's important to note that this isn't done alone. The Mountain Ranch Community Club has built a valuable partnership with groups like San Andreas Rotary, who have supported the park by providing volunteers, assisting with fundraising efforts, and offering their expertise in park maintenance and development projects. The collaboration strengthens our community. Looking ahead, the community club envisions Mountain Ranch Park, the Resource Center, Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance, and the community club itself working together in a harmonious circle, each supporting the other, creating a network of new services and events for residents of all ages. We're asking today that the county continue this tradition by renewing and retaining the lease of Mountain Ranch Park with the Mountain Ranch Community Club. This isn't just about caretaking a property. It's about keeping the management of this vital space in the hands of those that understand it best. No outside group, no matter how well-intended, can replace the deep-rooted connection, personal investment, and unwavering commitment the Mountain Ranch Community Club brings to this park.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'm Tim Tate. I'm a resident of Mountain Ranch. I am also a member of the Mountain Ranch Community Club and its board of directors. I'm here today to read you a letter from Phil Alberts, known affectionately as the honorary mayor of Mountain Ranch. It's dated June 23rd, 2025. Calaveras County Board of Supervisors. Subject line is "Support for Mountain Ranch Community Club to Manage the Mountain Ranch Park." Dear members of the board, as one of the original developers of Mountain Ranch Park, I'm writing in strong support of the Mountain Ranch Community Club's proposal to manage and care for this vital community space. The park has long been the heart of Mountain Ranch, providing recreation, connection, and a gathering place for residents of all ages. Its success depends on experienced, committed stewardship, and the Mountain Ranch Community Club has consistently demonstrated the dedication needed to carry that responsibility forward. Mountain Ranch Park was built through the hard work and unity of this community. In 1970, we began developing the ball field, a project fueled by volunteers, families, and neighbors who believed in creating a space for everyone. Over the years, the park has hosted countless community gatherings and sporting events. It's been home to the Hitmen, our adult baseball team, for many years, offering local athletes a place to come together and compete. Park has also proudly supported Little League teams, providing our youth a safe, welcoming environment to learn the game, build friendships, and foster a sense of teamwork and community pride. This park is deeply woven into the fountain ran, the fabric of Mountain Ranch, and it's essential that it remains under local leadership that understands and values its history and purpose. With a proven record of the community service, the Mountain Ranch Community Club is well-positioned to maintain, improve, and keep this treasured space accessible and vibrant for all. I urge the county to approve this transition, ensuring Mountain Ranch Park continues to serve as a thriving hub for residents for generations to come. Thank you for your time and consideration. Sincerely, Phil Alberts, honorary mayor of Mountain Ranch."
Thank you, Tim.
Hi, my name's Scott Burr. Good afternoon. Uh, I'm here today as the treasurer of the San Andreas Rotary Club, speaking in support of the, uh, Mountain Ranch Community Club's renewal of the lease. And I'd like to just, I didn't think I was going to make it here today, so I'll be able to rearrange my schedule, so I'm going to summarize my letter. On behalf of the San Andreas Rotary Club, I'm here to express our full support for the Mountain Ranch Community Club and their efforts to renew the lease for Mountain Ranch Park. Mountain Ranch Community Club has consistently demonstrated leadership, dedication, and a deep commitment to maintaining and improving this important public space for the benefit of the community. For over a decade, they've served as responsible stewards of the park, ensuring it remains safe, welcoming, and accessible to residents of all ages. Mountain Ranch Park is a vital gathering place for recreational, social, and community events, as well as a critical resource for emergency services when needed. Uh, Tim mentioned during the Butte Fire, it was a staging area for the emergency services, and it was vital. That open space was perfect for the, the needs of the time, and we need to maintain that. The community club's ongoing efforts and inclusive vision have helped preserve the park's value to the region while fostering partnership with, with local organizations and engaging volunteers to support its continued process. The community, uh, has really stepped up. It was, there was difficulties in maintaining, maintaining the park, and the community has really come on board, uh, with different organizations. As a service organization committed to community betterment and collaboration, the San Andreas Rotary Club proudly stands to support the Mountain Ranch Community Club's continued management of this essential community resource. We respectfully urge the board to approve the renewal of the lease, ensuring Mountain Ranch Park remains in capable and caring hands. Um, we really want to see the park continue as the community resource that it has been, um, and not fall into disrepair or change its purpose. So, thank you for your consideration, and we hope you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Allison Charter Smith. I'm the Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance Board President, so thank you so much for your consideration for our lease agreement renewal. I actually come before you not only as the board president of the Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance, but also by 100% support of the Mountain Ranch Community Club, the San Andreas Rotary Club, as continuing of the relationship of managing the Mountain Ranch Park. And I wanted to read a letter on behalf of Alan Sender that was dated, that was written in support of this, and it goes as, "To whom it may concern, I am writing to express my strong support for the Mountain Ranch Community Club's proposal to continue the management and stewardship of the Mountain Ranch Park. The Mountain Ranch Park and Community Center serves as a cornerstone for our community, providing a gathering place for families, local organizations, and events that strengthen the social fabric of our region. As a business owner and active participant in our community, I fully endorse this initiative and encourage others to support the Mountain Ranch Community Club stewardship of the Mountain Ranch Park. I recognize the importance of maintaining and enhancing this vital community space, and I firmly believe that the Mountain Ranch Community Club is well-equipped to continue on this respectively. Sincerely, Alan Sender." I also have a letter from, a second letter that was, is from, that I will read, is from Rochelle Sweet. "My name is Rochelle Sweet, and I'm writing to express my full support of the Mountain Ranch Community Club's proposal to take over the lease and management of the Mountain Ranch Park. I believe this is a positive and strategic step forward for the park and for the broader community. I was born and raised in Mountain Ranch, and my father was one of the many dedicated volunteers that helped build Mountain Ranch Park. Alongside our other volunteer firefighters and local residents, they created a beautiful place for families and neighbors to gather. Mountain Ranch Park has long been a vital part of the community, providing a welcoming space for recreation, events, and social connections. The ballpark draws visitors from throughout the tri-county area and consistently receives praises from those who attend games and events. The playground remains essential to the health and happiness of our young families, offering a safe and outdoor space for community play. I'm confident, under the stewardship of the Mountain Ranch Community Club, Mountain Ranch Park will remain to thrive and serve residents of all ages. Their leadership and commitment to the community are well-known, and this transition will help ensure the park remains a safe, beautiful, and accessible place for all. Sincerely, Rochelle Sweet." Thank you.
Thank you.
Kathy? Good afternoon, I'm Kathy Malziferro, and I'm here as the Executive Director for the Calaveras County Arts Council. It wasn't until yesterday that I received word that there was any confusion at all as to who's in charge and what's going on at the Mountain Ranch Community Park and Club, et cetera, which gives me great concern because as all of you know, summer means music in the parks, and we always have a concert at the Mountain Ranch Community Park. We always have the support, not a huge amount, but the Mountain Ranch Community Club does what they can for us to help support music in the parks. So I thought, well, I'm already going to be there, so I think I go to the Board of Supervisors meeting and see if I can find out what's going on. So I've listened to all of this, and I'm a little befuddled as to why there is a question, but in items three and four of number 33, what it does say is that evidently staff, no offense if it's not true, staff has asked you to authorize the closure of the parkland facilities, including the restrooms, effective July 1st, our concert is three weeks after that, until a new lease is executed with minimal maintenance provided for fire safety and vegetation, of course. What I'm asking, and Gary referred to it earlier, we have a financial endgame in sight, it's called October, and having listened to everything and having read this and knowing that we have a band light up, we've got a million-dollar general liability insurance policy in place, I would like to request that item four be returned to staff and that the park remain open until October 1st. By then, we'll all have a better, hopefully, grasp of what's going on in every field financially, but we never received word that the park wouldn't be open. And your, your citizens of Mountain Ranch are the best dancers ever. And I would, I would just hate to have their concert canceled because something else is going on. So I'm just asking that you consider, don't approve that. Send it back to staff until October 1st, get an RFP on what the heck is going on, and let us go ahead and have our concert. Thank you.
Thank you. Would you want Lori to come back up?
Um, with that, listening to all the comments and hearing them, my questions were already answered, so I'll move forward from there, if you don't mind, Ms. Anno. Just one thing, I'm going to contest, the Mountain Ranch dancers are wonderful, but from this guy's perspective, my wife's got him beat. And I'll say that every time, no matter where we are. But Kathy, they had not put in to continue managing it because they didn't know they had the capacity to continue doing it, but now they found people within the community, as they said, so now they would like to continue doing it. So that's where that confusion comes from. So it was not the direction of the board prior, it was because there was no one that had put in the RFP for the park side of it, as opposed to what the Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance puts together. So you actually answered the same question for me as she was asking, and I appreciate that.
And I just want to clarify one thing, Jamie was probably looking to clarify this.
I, I, I was gonna, and I was gonna ask you the same thing. Do we have to bring him back to change, for the lease option for, for the park? Do, we can't change that right now without having it in our hands?
Correct, so the issue, just to be clear, the staff's recommendation to temporarily close the park is not a budgetary thing, the issue is that the lease is expiring at the end of this month, and so it's, it was more of a function of that. If the board, this is not the type of lease, government code allows the leasing of county property for, you know, a certain term and for a certain dollar amount without there being a competitive process. So certainly if the board were to direct today that staff just negotiate a lease with the community club, a new lease, to continue managing the, leasing the park, the board could direct that, we wouldn't have to, for instance, do another RFP, although we could. That said, the lease itself does have to be publicly noticed and then come back to the board for approval.
And so, thank you. So that's going to go to my point here momentarily, because I, you know, we, we were having some hard talk on budgetary issues where I think some of the confusion may come from when it comes to our obligation to keep the area environmentally sound, and I, you know, from that discussion, the board has, you know, consistently moved forward on it, even though, you know, painful to our coffers regardless. So I completely understand the confusion, but that, both things happened at the same time, you know, the lease, the lease was up. With that, how much longer would it take if we put out the RFP process along with, could we do that in conjunction at the same timeline? I mean, there's one other person that voiced their want to put in with it, but we did already run a RFP process, so how are we doing on timing and legality?
I mean, that's, it's, in terms of legality, it's fully within the board's discretion whether you would like to have staff do another RFP for the park portion of the property versus just directing staff to contract directly with whomever. That said, in terms of timing, doing an RFP will necessarily add some time into the process, and obviously, we're also, we're a week away from the end of June.
So, yeah, and, and in the interest of that, I mean, I'm always for the RFP process, but the interest in time and everything else, I, I would be willing to consider District Two's proposal possibly on not going through the RFP process if she wants, but I do, would like to punt and bring in the RFP, not the RFP, but bring in the possible lease option later for approval, but not.
Okay, I have a question.
Okay.
If we were to go back out for RFP, can we do a short-term renewal of the leases that are in place?
There's public noticing that has to take place.
So unfortunately, so the issue is that, long, very long story short, when it comes to leasing county property, sort of the default is that that has to be a very protracted sort of public bidding, like almost an auction process. There is sort of, then there's exceptions to that. One is, exception is if it's a lease of less than 10 years for less than a dollar amount that I quite frankly don't remember off the top of my head. So that's what these leases have been historically. The problem is that unless I'm mistaken, the existing lease was a 10-year lease, so we're sort of already at the end of what can be done without that public bidding process?
Two-five.
Oh, it was only five?
Two-five.
Oh, oh, but two-five is 10.
Yeah, five years.
No, five is the new.
Right, but it was two consecutive five, so it was extended.
Oh, if it was only a five-year lease, then yes, we could do, we could do at least a brief extension.
I just don't want to see the, the park closed, you know, for a single hour, but because there is multiple interests, you know, to be true to our original RFP process, do we need to do that due diligence, but not allow for a closure in between?
If the existing lease is only a five, we could do a more short-term, brief extension of that lease to get us through an RFP process, wouldn't you say, Jamie? I mean.
As long as it doesn't, as long as it's not the two-five equaling the 10.
Yeah.
Well, that's, but that was a two-five.
If it was only a five-year lease, then.
But it was a two-five equaling a 10. She says it was a two-five equaling a 10 already.
So I don't know if that.
That's.
I need to look at the leases then, if that's the.
Yeah, that's, that's, we, we have a, can, this, the legal question is pertinent to.
Yeah, if you want to take a second, I can look at that.
I understand, if it's a 10 or if it's two-fives on top of each other, that's.
Two-fives on top of each other for a 10 is also an issue, potentially.
Yeah, I just need to look at the existing lease and compare it to the, the government code, yeah.
Can we take a five-minute break?
Sure.
Let's do it.
Is that enough time?
Five minutes. Five-minute break.
I have snacks, if anybody needs something. Want a snack?
Okay, we're back on.
Okay, um, thank you for the brief break. I did confirm that the existing, by which I mean the one that's in place for the next week, lease between the county and the community club was in fact a five-year lease. So consistent with the government code, the board could direct staff to enter into a brief extension of that lease while, while staff then carries out whatever the remainder of the board's direction is, whether that be put out another RFP for this portion of the property, or whether that be notice a new lease with, with the community club, a new longer-term lease, either of which will then come back to the board for approval.
Okay, thank you.
Samantha, would you like to speak one more time?
Just to get official, I guess. Yeah, so I really came today and did what I did since April to gather up people because the community club had voiced that they were struggling and were not going to renew, and I felt it a duty and a responsibility to the community and to the park to sort of carry the torch and just show up, and so I gathered lots of people to, you know, represent today to try to do this, but after hearing all the support for the community club and that they have found someone to take care of the park, I do not need to, you know, I don't need to, to hold the lease, I don't need to apply for that, and I'm totally in support of them, and I'm sure all the people that we've gathered to try to do this will just be in support of the community club.
Thank you so much.
I'm sure, I'm sure if we go forward with them, they'll need help, so you can.
I'm sure they will, yeah.
Get her name before she leaves.
Thank you, guys.
Get her on the contract.
So is there any, yes, Lori, if you come up, if you have any more public comment?
Yes, thank you. This is on the subject of the park and the best interest of the park. We have a problem with the leach line, and so there was a bid made and approval of that, and then apparently we were out there checking the bathrooms, and we saw the engineer that, I don't know if he was an engineer, we saw the guy that was measuring the well, and it was 28 feet, and not what he thought, so we have to stop that project until we figure out what the Board of Supervisors decide to do with that. We pay over $4,000 a year in the minimum, that is our insurance, our dumpster, our third cost of the state water board license, as well as the water board testing to provide you with safe drinking water, and also the toilet paper and paper towels, that's no improvement, that's not the $7,000 merry-go-round. But now we're stuck, literally, like, how can we go on with events? How can we do our car show and park? And then every time you have seen music in the park, are they going to? We let them do it for free because they're not-for-profit and it's a benefit to our community and our park. Who pays for that porta potty? So I'm not asking you two, I'm asking that we get this going on the porta potty so that the leach line can be going and people can do their fundraisers and their functions out there that is crucial in order to raise that 4,000 a year for minimum, no improvements, that's minimum. So if we could please consider how to get that going again, that would be great. Thank you very much.
Is there any further public comment? Any public comment online?
We have no online public comment.
Thank you, bring it back to the board then.
The wheels of government move slowly, that, we're still working on that.
So are we.
Yeah, we're working on that. In light of everything that's been discussed today, for number one, the first part, my recommendation to the board would be to renew the lease with the Youth Alliance, being that they turned it in earlier at the given time, being that it's a five-year lease currently in place with both, we could do that extension of six months to keep the park open so there is zero closure taking place, and then for the purchasing agent, for staff, to enter into a brand-new lease agreement with the community club for the park. That would be my request and recommendation.
Would you like to make that as a motion?
I would make that as a mo, well, discussion.
Some comments prior to us making a motion, please.
Okay. Sarah?
Oh, I just wanted to give a small clarification. I believe that the, the new lease, the brand-new lease that we're going to negotiate with the community club, that will still, that will come back to the board for approval.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
But you're authorizing the purchasing agent to do the extension on the current lease.
Correct.
And then the lease that we negotiate for the extension, you want that to be until the extension, you want it to match the interim of the other lease as well, correct? So June of, so it'd be four and a half years.
Almost five-year lease.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Surprised or stopper, anything else?
Um, I, you know, through this process, completely agree for the most part. In the interest of, it's brought up, you know, we have this template that we've been working with for years when we're leasing property in Calaveras County. It's become.
It's become an issue in some instances, and I don't think it's so much as us working with the community, but we have to make a decision when and if we need to change that because times have changed on certain things. Now, like, I've done a lot of time, we're being up in Mountain Ranch community, going to events there since I was a toehead about that tool. But, and it's very valued, and the work and everything that's going in from, you know, in the beginning, the, you two actually putting your hands on the work, along with the community club backing you, is very valued, and you can see it there. But where I'm going with this is, the investment has been phenomenal, but we do the investment, the county takes on the maintenance later. And that maintenance costs build off of that investment. And I think that a lot of the issues that we're discussing right now isn't so much that we support the, these types of things, and we support every park in there. It's about how much responsibility the, these leases take when it comes to not, I mean, not the investment, the investments there. You've done a phenomenal job building and making it a great place, it's fall up on the maintenance. And how much can the county continue to maintain as these groups keep investing in there and expanding across the county? It's not one place or another. So I, I'm interested in seeing a change. I would love to go with everything you just suggested, with bringing back the lease, with options on how we're going to move forward with the maintenance. Not that I expect these groups to shoulder these huge amounts when the county owns and takes the liability on these buildings, but I, I, I think that those communities, as they build on these areas and continue to make that maintenance cost more, need to make a commitment to taking on part of that responsibility, even though it's, I mean, it's burdensome for all of us, and, but, it's all valued. So I, I, I'm making a suggestion on how, you know, we look at these leases in the future and who's taking on the responsibility for how much when it comes to the maintenance.
So I do believe that your board gave direction at the last meeting with budget that one of the items coming back was looking at all of the current leases that we have in place.
Yes.
So I think that that would probably be a continuation from that direction given.
Right, so in the interim, are we will we have that? And that's why I'm saying is, you know, if we make a decision there, that changes the template on these leases in the future, and where do we start? The, I, it's, it's more of a question from my perspective, not saying we have to force this on them first, you know, is, we need to make that change and say why at a certain point, and justify it, so that we can continue to make these parks and everything suitable for the community in the future, and continue to upkeep it.
Thank you, Supervisor Colendorf.
I have a, it might be similar to what Ben is trying to say, so I'm just going to blunt it. Given the comment that we just received, without it becoming a for-profit, how can, when we build these leases, these groups be able to share that cost, to have somebody else have, pay for the porta potties? You know, can they charge, and I don't know what the terminology, like, can they charge, can they be responsible for charging, you know, say they have an event for someone to cover the porta potties, or something else to help with those, without making it a profit for profit, if that makes sense?
Yeah, I mean, in general, from our side of things, the answer is yes, you know, when we're leasing these facilities to the community groups, it's, you know, it is for, obviously, use of the community and the public, but that doesn't mean that they don't have some flexibility with those sorts of things. At that point, it's going to be more for those groups and what they can or can't do legally, as you point out, if they have nonprofit status or that sort of thing.
Okay, okay. But that can be built to be recognized in those.
There's nothing, like, in the leases that would prevent that, like, if they're, if they're, for instance, if the, if the group to which the county leases the property is letting then someone else have an event there, and they say that someone else has to pay for porta potties, there's nothing in the lease that would prevent them from doing that.
Okay.
Hang on just a second.
The board.
It's, we're back at the board.
Yeah.
So I, yeah, I think we're done with public comment.
I was going to explain something, am I clear?
Um, we, 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 we aren't necessarily needing explanation beyond law, we're talking about how we're going to move forward in the future that, on our behalf. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Holly, you still all right?
I'm good.
Thank you very much. So I will pass the board if we.
I, I just have a comment on what was just being said, and I'm not saying I disagree with what's being said here, and that's something we can look at, the possibility going forward. But again, in all of these parks that are taken care of by leases that we have, i, i, if we didn't have them wanting to step up, it would all be boarded up and just grown over, and, and it would be just, it's not, so appreciate everything you do. And, and, and I think that needs to be put into at least the thought process, if we're going to go forward, it's going to come back to us, not this particular lease, it will come back to us once it negotiated, but we're going to move forward in what's being said here, that we take that into contention, that without them providing the service and maintaining that, that we would have just a mess, so, on all of these parks.
So, I think we've all said that.
Well, I just said it, so.
Yeah, I think we've all said that.
Okay, Supervisor Stopper, do you, is your light still on? Do you want to say anything else?
I'm just, I was just talking about the future and how we're going to move forward with this. I'm willing to consider the extension on them both for the time being, and then we'll have our meeting on how it's moving forward, that's where I'm at. But you know what, it's her motion, I'll let her make it.
Supervisor Andal.
I would like to officially make the motion of the recommendation that I gave earlier. I would like to do a temporary extension.
Do you want me to, do you want me to, so just going off? So going off of what, what the recommendation was, so it would be, one, make a finding of public benefit, two, approve and authorize the board chair to execute a lease agreement with the Mountain Ranch Youth Alliance for continued operation of the Resource Center and Community Kitchen for a five-year term at an annual lease amount of $1. Three, direct staff to enter into an extension, a six-month extension of the existing lease with the Mountain Ranch Community Club for the park area. And four, direct staff to negotiate a new lease for that park area with the community club that would end at the same time as this new Youth Alliance lease, and then that will get, come back to the board for approval.
That is the motion.
Do you have a second?
You want to repeat that? I'm not sure I understand it.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
I was not.
Okay.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all very much.
Well, the park won't close, so.
That's awesome.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I'll see you guys Saturday.
So we'll move on now.
Item number 34.
Item 34, Agreement Economic and Community Development, approve and authorize the board chair to execute an agreement with the Stanislaus Regional Housing Authority to sub-award $1,558,296 of the county's regional early action planning REAP 2.0 grant funds to SRHA for construction of housing that is consistent with the REAP 2.0 program goals.
Thank you. Ms. Colino.
Good morning, Chair, Honorable Board.
Afternoon.
I know it's late.
Afternoon. You sick of my?
See, my blood sugar's really low. Anyways, before you today is an agreement very excited to bring forward regarding promoting our workforce housing and throughout Calaveras County, but first project being here in San Andreas at the Foothill Terrace property, that has not been able to go forward in development for our workforce housing. We did put out an RFP, we received two responses, one of which was just stellar with Stanislaus Regional Housing. We negotiated the agreement, and that's what you have before you today. Sorry?
Sure. Thank you. Do we have any?
Questions?
Comments or questions?
11 parcels, 26 units, workforce housing, Foothill Terrace, great project, great partnership.
Is there any public comment regarding this?
Okay, I'm getting stiff. Kate Allen, John Allen Construction, I just had a couple of questions. I did read through the RFP that was provided in the agenda board packet, and it said that the Stanislaus Housing Authority was planning to build 26 single-family, one-bedroom units for sale. I was curious what the square footage was, if that was included in the plan. I was also curious if in the grant award, if there's any stipulation to guarantee that the housing actually gets built. If you'll see, it's all for pre-construction costs, most of which they've already spent, the land, the plans, a lot of those, those parts of this project particularly have already been done, but the, but they've been sitting like that for quite a few years. I'm, I'm super excited and support housing in San Andreas. I would love to see something happen at that parcel, but I am a bit nervous about $1.5 million being given to the agency to then 10 years from now still not have any houses built there. So I didn't know if there was any verbiage about that, you know, what is, what is their obligation to actually construct the homes? And what is the square footage of 26 single-family, one-bedroom units for sale that is proposed there, just to get an understanding of what the feasibility of the success of that project would be? Thank you.
Thank you.
Very good questions. And yes, we have talked to Stanislaus Regional Housing Authority, they were initially thinking about doing one-bedroom studios. We had mentioned the importance of having more diversity, such as duplexes, two-bedrooms, and as far as I know, I, I don't have the contract in front of me, but the pre-development is to leverage the funding that they already have, which is about $6 million, to actually finish construction, and that is the purpose of this funding and purpose of the agreement. So the funding is to ensure that the housing gets built, that it doesn't stay with the chain link fence and we're sitting here again in another 10 years.
Also, the clock is ticking on these funds, is that correct?
Correct. So we have to encumber the funds by March 2021, and I have their quick budget on March 2026. Sorry, my blood sugar is, I say, very low. So again, architectural, design, engineering, permit fees, so even though the pre, predevelopment was done initially, there's improvements that are going to have to happen on that, there might be additional widening, widening of roads and utility connections, so they're stubbed in, but actually connecting the meters. And then the other piece, uh, I'm sorry.
Take your time. No worries.
Actually, we do have an online public comment, so if that would give you.
It might be Jim Cruz, so Jim Cruz is the executive director.
It's actually Kimberly Ryan.
Okay.
So, but.
Kimberly Ryan with Stanislaus Regional Housing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Cam?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Oh, I lost her, but I can't see you guys, but that's okay. I just wanted to, we, we've hung in here to the last of this meeting, and unfortunately, Jim, who's our CEO, executive director, was, had another budget meeting he needed to get to with the California Department of Housing and Community Development, so he wanted me to apologize right away. We, we appreciate the opportunity and the partnership that we're getting with Calaveras County to get this project off the ground. Schedule-wise, we, this really helps us get going, and we're, we're planning to reach out to the county to meet, the team to meet with the planning department in the next couple of weeks. I see that, you know, we've got the Fourth of July coming up, so it's probably going to be after that, that we can connect with the county, make sure we're all on the same page, like Kathy was saying with, you know, getting the utilities, what we're going to need, streetwise, all that kind of stuff, hash that out. The, the units are going to be about 580 square feet for the studio one-bedroom, it's actually a one-bedroom unit that we're looking at putting in there. And, you know, we're still in the proposed stage of what that's going to look like. We do want to sell, but if it's not, we, you know, homeownership is really important, we know that. However, to make the, the project feasible, you know, we are, we are looking at maybe doing some, selling of some homes, and then follow up with if we need to rent some of them out. So it's, it's all kind of in, in the works right now, but this really helps us get, get this project off the ground. So I just wanted to give you a few tidbits that we've been questioning, so, anything else?
Does the board have any other questions?
The only other thing that I'd like to add is that we have discussed our pre-approved plans. We do have sets at the building department that are off the shelf that could also help save cost, time, and money. So we're looking forward to having that conversation, provided you approve this today.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the board.
I'll move.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I will second with the comment that it would be great to continue exploring some diversity in the housing models, rather than just one-bedrooms.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Five, Sarah? We'll move on now to supervisor announcements.
In compliance with government code 53232.3D, board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings intended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or will part out.
Supervisor Stopper? Supervisor Tocanelli?
I have nothing.
Supervisor Colendorf?
The only thing I have, Martin will be covering me at Ochi Ochi this week. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Supervisor Andal?
I attended first five on June 11th. This last Saturday, June 14th, we had a very successful wildfire preparedness event in West Point. It was recorded by our local TV, if anybody wants to watch it. And today I walked in the Special Olympic Torch Run. It was wonderful.
Thank you. Really quickly, on the 12th, Agency on Aging, we're looking for a new finance, financial director. If anybody knows of a good financial director, please let me know. On the 18th, Housing Resource Partnership Meeting, went very well. 19th, we did the Fire Safe Council Meeting. On the 22nd, Love Creek Homeowners Association Meeting. And with that, that will, oh, Madam CEO, do you have anything to report?
I do.
County Council?
Close session.
Yes, thank you. We will be terminating this portion of the meeting and going into closed session now.
And we'll report out of closed session at our next meeting.
So item, item 35.
Oh, sorry, you actually have to read out, I apologize.
Pursuant to government code 54956.95, conference with legal counsel, free workers' compensation claim, Jack Tressler, County of Calaveras, claim number CCBC 555854. Item 36, pursuant to government code 54956.9D2NE3, conference with legal counsel, free anticipated litigation, one case, significant exposure litigation, receipt of claim number 202405, Denham, Act No. 2. Items 37, pursuant to government code 54956.9D1, conference with legal counsel, free existing litigation, Houseworth versus County, workers' compensation appeals board case number ADJ
Thank you. And now we will break and go into closed session.